We're gonna wait five minutes before we start our meeting, so thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can I have your attention? Good evening. It's wonderful to see such a great crowd here this evening. I'd start the meeting then. Thank you, thank you. It's good to see everybody here this evening. What a wonderful crowd. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to ask for invocation Rosario Dominion from the Word of Life to come forward for our invocation. Please stand.
Hello, hello, everyone. Lord Jesus, we come before you, Lord Jesus, once again, just thankful, Lord God, for your goodness, for your mercy and grace, and for the great gift of salvation. Father, right now, I pray, Lord, that you be in our midst, Lord God. I pray, Lord God, that your Holy Spirit will give us direction, Lord, that everything that is spoken of today, Lord God, that it will be for the good of the people, Lord God, in this city, in this town, Lord. I pray, Father, that everything that is done, Lord God, that everything that is done in your name, Lord God, that it would be, Lord God, of a great blessing to everyone. I thank you, Lord God, for your goodness, once again, Father, and I pray, Lord God, that you give us wisdom, understanding, Lord God, and most importantly, Lord God, that you help us to come into one mind and one accord in any decision made today. In your holy name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call the order. This meeting of the City Council of Las Vanas for November 5th, 2025, and Chief, we have the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under oath, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was wonderful to hear everybody giving the pledge. That's great. And let's see, we will now go with roll call, please.
Perez, Sanders, Chavez.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Amabile.
I am here. The first item is consideration of approval of the agenda as submitted. And before we have a motion on that, I need that motion. We've had a request to move item 10 up to...
Behind eight. In front of eight.
In front of eight, right, correct?
Right after the consent.
Okay, right after the consent agenda, we will move item 10, which is the P bid. We'll move it forward for the convenience of everybody here in the audience. And if so, if I could have that motion to move that along with approval as the rest of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to prove the approval of the agenda as submitted with the movement of item 10 as stated. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. So now we have some presentations. I'll come forward. So last Saturday, we had a wonderful parade in town for the Veterans Day. It was organized by our local veterans. They did an excellent job. Patricia did an excellent job. Mike, if you, if you, your group to come forward, please. I have a proclamation commemorating the Veterans Day, which is this November 11th. Whereas freedom are we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas since establishment of the original 13 states have been willing to fight and die to preserve their individual rights as guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas we owe a great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation and throughout the generations, their sacrifices, and they have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to the human rights and respect for all individuals. And whereas for many, the sacrifice has ended in permanent injury or death, yet the spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example for all the oppressed persons in the world. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of people dedicated to principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Las Vanas call upon all citizens to salute our veterans who have served with honor and distinction and to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies in honor of our veterans, both living and deceased, who have served this country so willingly to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. To fly the flag and to show our veterans, we appreciate their great sacrifice. Congratulations. We can't thank you enough.
On behalf of both the VFW and the American Legion, we'd like to thank you, Mayor, and thank the city council, and thank the city for all that you do for the veterans in Las Vanas.
Thank you very much. Now we're gonna have... Oh, okay. So if we could have Grasslands Elementary come forward. I'm forward. So everybody's here, okay. So this is a certificate of recognition presented to Grasslands Elementary School in recognition of being named as the most patriotic elementary school for its entry in the 2025 Veterans Day Parade. The staff and students are applauded for their outstanding efforts. Congratulations, and Mike.
We want to thank all of the schools in Las Vanas. We had all of the schools participate this year, and I feel really sorry for our judges because a lot of these winners were only by one or two points. Everybody did an excellent job, and to see all of these young people with what they have put forth in an effort to support the veterans, it just makes you want to have tears in your eyes. It's just a great, great feeling to see what they do.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karthik Prasad, here on behalf of Congressman Adam Gray. And we also wanted to take a moment to recognize Grasslands Elementary. Their float was absolutely incredible. And it was a, they were so incredibly polite when they came up to ask for water at the water table. So I really want to thank everyone here on behalf of them and all the parents because they were very, very adorable, and it was great fun making sure they were hydrated. So, behalf of Congressman Adam Gray in the United States House of Representatives, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Congratulations. Now we can have Creekside Junior High School come forward. Thank you very much. Make your way in. Your way in. Well, what a good turnout and excellent job of the parade. And you look older than, than it should be for junior high, but... I guess you like that, but when you're my age, you don't like to look older. Anyway, this is certificate of recognition presented to Creekside Junior High in recognition of being named the most patriotic junior high school for its entry in the 2025 Veterans Day Parade. The staff and students are applauded for their outstanding efforts. Congratulations. And I'll give this over to...
Again, we would like to, like to give a special thanks to Creekside. I believe this two years in a row, isn't it, sir? Yeah. You know, one point's all it takes. But all of it, again, like I said before, all of these, all of the entries this year from the schools were outstanding, and I believe... Did we get them all this year? Didn't we get them all? All but one. Two. All but two. All but two schools participated, so... What an excellent showing for the schools in the city of Las Vanas.
I'll also extend the, that was some very tough competition, but two years running is pretty darn good. So, behalf of Congressman Adam Gray in the United States House of Representatives, thank you, and good luck on year three.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we got the pictures. Congratulations. Really appreciate you. Okay, if we can have Las Vanas High School, any of Las Vanas High School here, please come forward. Las Vanas High, come forward. Well, again, we're very proud of the high school, Las Vanas High, for their entry in the parade, and this is a certificate of recognition presented to Las Vanas High School in recognition of being named the most patriotic high school for its entry in the 2025 Veterans Day Parade. The staff and students are applauded for their outstanding efforts. Congratulations very much.
Likewise, we also wanted to recognize Las Vanas High for incredible turnout during the parade. Additionally, I also just wanted to tell a brief story. I saw, while I was giving out water there, saw a smaller kid who looked very, very thirsty, and I was thinking about walking over and giving them water because they were drenched in sweat. And it was someone from Las Vanas High who came over and asked for a bottle of water, took it, went over and gave it to them. So, want to thank you guys for keeping an eye out on the smaller kids as well. So, thank you.
Okay, and again, the high school did an outstanding job. And the veterans prayed, it's kind of a unique veterans' parade that we have in Las Vanas. I live in Las Vanas. I don't know of any place else that the veterans put the parade on for themselves. The county gets stuck with putting the parade on in Merced, and they do an awesome job in Merced. But in Las Vanas, we wanted a veterans' parade, and we've done it ourselves. How many years, Patricia? Thirteen years. We've done, we started out with about 30 entries to what we have today, and it lasted just over an hour this year, so. So, thank the community for supporting us, and we thank all of the schools for being involved. We're gonna get those other two schools for next year because we're gonna have a bigger and better parade.
Thank you, Mike. Take a picture. Thank you again. Thank you. Congratulations. So that's the fun part of being mayor and city council, is doing those things. Is Brad Breskew, are you here, Brad? Thought you was... Oh, yes. Come forward. So this is certificate of recognition presented to Brad Breskew, Maintenance Worker One, Parks and Recreation Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Las Vanas and for being named Employee of the Month for October 2025. He does an excellent job for the city, like all our employees do, but he's special to us. He's the best of the best for October, so congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, so we had an officer retire, and unfortunately, she's not here. But I'd like to read her proclamation because it's definitely deserving. It's a proclamation recognizing the retirement of the city of Los Banos Police Officer Teresa Proventio. Whereas Teresa joined the Los Banos Police Department as a property evidence clerk on September 17, 2001, and whereas Teresa became a police officer trainee on May 20, 2003, and was sworn in as the police officer on October 24, 2003. Whereas Teresa served as a canine handler from May 2016 to June 2019, and as a school resource officer at Pacheco High School as of April 29, 2016. And whereas Teresa has contributed tremendously throughout her career to the community of Los Banos with her knowledge and commitment to her job. And Teresa retired from the city of Los Banos as a police officer on November 2, 2025, with 24 years of service as a city employee. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos do commend Teresa on her dedication and loyalty to the city of Los Banos, and we all congratulate her on her retirement and chief. If you could make sure she gets this from the city council. We'd really appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes.
So Teresa, her most recent assignment was school resource officer. She served at Pacheco High School for several years. So Teresa brought a lot of valuable knowledge to the city of Los Banos, and she will be missed. So thank you, Teresa, if you're listening for your service. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations on your retirement. We will go on to item five E. And it's a city council resolution number 7007, commendation to Gary Ambrezi Jr. So if we could go ahead and have that motion, and then we'll all bring Gary up here and talk about it.
7007 is read by title.
So move. I'm in second. We can let Councilmember Evans take it.
Okay, we have a motion by Chavez, second by Evans, for resolution number 7007. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. And now we'll go down. Okay, Gary, it's time. He doesn't like to be put on the spot too much. But I, at the last city council meeting, we made quite a few comments about Gary, and they were all very good. And as a city and as a council, we can't thank him enough for what he did. He brought this city back together again. He healed our employees. And he was the perfect person at the right time, the right person to get it done. And I am so very honored to read this resolution to you. Resolution number 7007. Resolution of commendation to Gary Ambrezi Jr. Whereas Gary Ambrezi Jr. has faithfully and honorably served the city of Los Banos for nearly three decades in a variety of leadership roles, including multiple appointments as interim city manager. And whereas Gary began his distinguished career with the Los Banos Police Department in 1995, serving as a police officer, sergeant, commander, and ultimately, chief of police from 2010 until his retirement in 2023. And whereas Gary has served the city of Los Banos as interim city manager on four occasions, from November 2012 to May 2013, January 2016 to July 2016, March 2021 to September 2021, and February 2025 to November 2025, each time providing steady leadership, professionalism, and commitment to public service. And whereas through his tenure, Gary has guided the city of Los Banos through important transitions, budget proposition, preparations, and key community initiatives with fairness, compassion, and integrity while effectively managing city budgets, strengthening intergovernable partnerships, and demonstrating an unwavering dedication to the well-being of the Los Banos community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Los Banos that it hereby expresses its sincere gratitude and appreciation to Gary Ambrezi Jr. for his exemplary service, leadership, and longstanding commitment to the city of Los Banos. Be it further resolved that an embossed copy of this resolution be presented to Gary as an expression of the city's appreciation and respect. Congratulations.
He's struggling right now. And I understand this because when he retired as our chief of police, we had a little retirement party for him, and it was hard to track him down to get him to come. But he did show up. So I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was away for a conference for the air board. And so Gary has been a real trooper for our city to help us move along, and I want to thank you for that. And I'll just say this. Happy trails to you. We hope we don't meet again. That you can go into retirement and enjoy your time. So thank you again for what you've done. Thank you.
I prepared a speech for Gary. No, I'm just kidding, Gary. It was just a piece of paper. As long as he... Thank you very much, Gary. Thank you. I won't make it worse for you.
Thank you, Gary. I'm glad you got dressed up for this. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. You eased my transition into public office very well, probably better than anybody else could have. Very much appreciated.
You want to say something?
Just real quick, just want to say thank you to the staff and the people that I work with every single day. These folks around the table make my job easy. We had a lot of highs and lows, I guess you could say. Busy days, nice days. I want to say thank you to the council for your support and faith in me. That was very much appreciated. We really had a good time, but we got a lot accomplished. And last, I would like to thank my mother, and most importantly, my beautiful wife, who's been with me, thick and thin, for seems like 38 years, love? Is that about right? Technically, 27. So anyways, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And when you get tired of them, kick them back to the city, okay? And before we start a public forum, Chief, you want to come up for a second to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As promised, I stopped by with Officer David Peralta. David just recently retired. Too soon. Sunday. He just completed the police academy, the Delta Police Academy in Stockton. And so I'm here to introduce Officer Peralta to the council, the mayor, and to our community. So Officer Peralta has just started with us. He is now going through the training program. And do you have any words?
Yes, first off, I'm very excited to be here. I look forward to a rewarding career within the department. And I can just say that I'm very proud of the start service of a community that I can tell is very deeply rooted in family values. So that's something that I really much look forward to and look forward to many more members of the community throughout my course of my career here. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We really appreciate you being here, choosing Los Banos, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we will go to our public forum. Members of the public may address this... Oh, yes, that's right. Before we go to the public forum, we're going to have a presentation discussing regarding the federal shutdown and the impacts of the CalFresh program. And Director of the County Human Services, John, come forward. And we're honored to have our county supervisor, Scott Silveira here, District Five. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Mr. Vaughn, how you been? So, you know, as we had a discussion, this presentation was given at our board meeting on Tuesday, and we thought it was important to get really good information out to folks. You know, at the local level, you guys all know this at the city council. We know this at the county. There's things that happen in Washington, DC that we really have no control over. And one of those things is with our CalFresh benefits SNAP, as it's known federally, there's people who are not getting the resources that they need. And so I just wanted to let the folks here in Los Banos know and all over the county that we didn't just sit by and didn't do anything. And under the leadership of our director, John Chekely, we've been working on this issue now for multiple weeks. And we opened up what we call a Department Operations Center, which brings all the smartest people in the county that touch these human services, the Health and Human Services Agency, all of our nonprofit groups, the Merced County Food Bank, brought all these folks together in order to be able to combat this issue. And so John's going to give you guys a detailed presentation and if you want to donate, where you can donate at, if you need resources, where you can go to be able to pick up those food resources. So a very detailed presentation, and I don't want to say that folks are going to enjoy it because it really is a tumultuous time, but it is going to be something that we give you good, solid information that you can rely on. You hear a lot of stuff in the media. Court rulings said this is going to happen. Just understand that if you think local government works slowly, the federal government works even slower. So even if they opened up the government tomorrow, we're still talking weeks away from people being able to see their benefits. And there is a need out there, and John's going to be able to share some more information with you folks that where you can go and how you can access those resources. So, Mr. Chekely, please.
Welcome, John.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Los Banos City Council, John Chekely, Director of the Human Service Agency. And in two days, I'll have been in that position for one month. And I couldn't have asked for a better time to serve during a disruption to really bring that team together under a shared vision and a shared goal as far as how we could mitigate this disruption to the CalFresh benefits due to the government shutdown. So on October 20th of 2025, we started receiving message traffic from our California Department of Social Services. They basically started releasing guidance regarding the funding hold due to the government shutdown. And they stated that as of October 23, that the shutdown persisted beyond that date, there would be a disruption and a delay in benefits. It's a big federal program, right? We're talking about a nationwide impact. So there's mechanisms for how those funds are distributed to recipients. It's over the first 10 days of the month, and literally eight days prior to that, this process has to start. So here we are on the 5th. The process still hasn't started. To Supervisor Silveira's statement, we are expecting a more protracted time period before benefits are issued. What we did as a department was immediately start preparing for what that disruption was going to look like and how, again, we could mitigate that. That started on the week of October 20, once this information started coming out. Part of that information was just information fidelity. There's a lot of access to information via social media that wasn't necessarily accurate. I'm sure we all saw some of the, you know, days of rage, or November 3 is going to be national, go get groceries and walk out. So it obviously created, you know, some concern amongst the individuals, not only in my department, but across the county, as well as community members. On October 22, California Department of Social Services stated through our federal partners that there would be no federal reimbursement, no FEMA reimbursement. This was not a disaster like we would normally, where that would become a normal process. There would be no federal reimbursement for any emergency funds issued as a supplement to the CalFresh program. And on October 23, as many of you may know, there was two federal judge rulings that was requiring the release of funds sometime this week. And information is still forthcoming on that. It doesn't look like there's going to be any counter litigation in regards to that fact. I think now they're trying to figure out what that release will look like. In the emergency funds, there was about $5 billion available, which is about half of what would be needed for a monthly distribution across the entire United States. I think it's important to note as well, although this is only impacting CalFresh at this point, other federally funded programs such as our CalWorks, federally it's known as TANF, Temporary Assistance to Needy Families. It's really a cash aid, foster care payments, aid to adoption payments, in-home supportive service payments. If this government shutdown is not resolved, you know, relatively quickly, there could be impacts to those federal programs as well. So be mindful that this disruption could spread again on October 27. We actually, the week prior, had met with some of our, what we would call our policy group, which is basically the department heads at the county to discuss what this looks like. And if we, as other jurisdictions, had done, we're going to activate our Emergency Operations Center to deal with this. It was decided that it would be better at this point to start with the Department Operations Center opening, and we commenced that activation in close coordination with our Office of Emergency Services on October 27. And I think it's important to point out the reason why we did that. This clearly exceeded very quickly our span of control as a department. We started talking about doing outreach to the biggest grocers in the community. We were talking about what we were seeing message traffic from a safety perspective. We were talking about on November 3, 9,000 households in Merced County would not have received their CalFresh benefit. And what if just 10% of them came to, you know, the three department offices? How would we manage traffic flow? How would we get information out? What kind of security would we have in place for our county staff? So that's really what prompted us to formally activate our Department Operations Center. Some background, there's 32,000 households in Merced County that receive CalFresh benefit. Those households are composed of 67,000 individuals, of which 26,000 are children, zero to 18, and over 9,500 recipients are age 60 and over. Here in Los Banos, there's 10,000 plus recipients of CalFresh. This is obviously a community might impact. Every community jurisdiction within our county has a household that is receiving CalFresh benefit. And federally, we know that as SNAP, and I like to point out, it's a supplemental nutrition assistance program. It's not designed to be necessarily for a household's entire needs of food. Some of the Department of, US Department of Agricultural Stats, one-third of total SNAP households have earned income. Again, supplemental. In California, approximately 2 in 5 households have employed members that are receiving the Supplemental Nutrition Program or CalFresh. And in Merced County, and this is a little different statistic, I want to be clear about it. Over 19,000 CalFresh households have income. But that could also, the prior two statistics were earned income. This is just income overall. So it could be retirement, a widow's pension for a veteran, et cetera. So approximately 60% have some type of income of the recipients within Merced County. We looked more broadly at the economic impacts as we, you know, planned on how we could mitigate that. $11.7 million in monthly benefits are provided to families, which is approximately $316 per household. And then we looked at the amount of vendors that accepted our electronic benefit transfer card. And there were over 300 vendors... transfer card and there were, there were over 300 vendors, some large, some small, that did receive that. So, you know, early on, we're like, how do we communicate this? California Department of Social Services was sending text messages and emails informing the recipients. We also have the ability to send out text messages, which we did, but, you know, was that going to be enough? Was that going to capture everybody? We literally had folks in the streets, making sure individuals experiencing homelessness, for example, who may not have access to a phone or an email, were being informed to anticipate this slowdown. And I think this is where, as a Department Operations Center efforts, I can say here, you know, a few weeks into this now, probably the fruits of our labor really, really came out and came through this Monday. You know, we identified early on which, what stakeholders did we need to engage with. And one, obviously, it was the Merced County Food Bank. And we learned some things and, and we're going to take those forward post this disruption. The Merced County Food Bank provides meals to 42,000 households monthly through a network of food pantries that are distributed in almost every community and city within Merced County. So there's over 40 of those food pantries that people can have access to. Very early on, one of the first phone calls we made was to Bethel Community Church. And just to, to gauge like the scale of what you normally do is going to be disrupted here, you know, Pastor Hammond, how do you feel about that? And Pastor Hammond, being Pastor Hammond, was like, you put, put us out there on social media, do whatever we have to to get the folks that are here and we'll serve them as long as we can with as much as we can for, you know, to help out with this. The food bank itself, we partnered with them very closely on food drives. We had one last Saturday, we'll have one this Saturday. We called all of those pantries and, and just verified the information that we were going to make public, making sure they understood and, and their capacity's being stretched as much as you could imagine with this, this level of, of need that's in the community. Several have called and said, we need additional resources in order to meet the high demand right now. We called the superintendent of schools. Schools were just organically providing meals, you know, providing take home lunches and dinners to their students. One of my colleagues, her child came home and on Saturday she, she, she mentioned to her, she's like, hey, I, I got a bag when I was leaving school this Friday. And they opened it up and it had a ham sandwich and some other, you know, necessities that a child might need if they didn't have another option. You know, obviously in this case, there was food in the house. So it was just very nice to see so many different sectors within our community. We engaged with our Managed Care Plan, who administers Medi-Cal and some community supports through an Enhanced Care Management Program, and asked them, can you reach out to the 50 providers that you have and make sure they understand there's been a disruption? We created a URL, a unique resource link, so folks could go to www-countyofmerced.com/foodresources and know not only where they could get resources, but how they could contribute to this effort. Our Board of Supervisors recorded videos for social media distribution. Our, our county executive officer recorded a video at locations. We had 18 locations spread throughout the county that volunteered primarily through fire stations, including one here in Los Banos, to be food bin donation sites, to just make it more convenient for, for well-meaning community members who wanted to contribute. And then lastly, and I think in the united way, was another huge partner in this effort through their 211. Right at one point, we were like, we need to get food donations, we need to have food distribution and we need to be able to orient people on how to get to those locations. And through leveraging the food bank, the food pantries and 211 as a resource, all of those boxes were checked, at least from a logistical standpoint. We still need food, we still need donations, we're still doing food drives and we're still encouraging community members who want to help to either make monetary donations and they can go to that website to do so, or food donations. We learned that the food bank is able to purchase food for about 24 cents for a pound. And I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how that's possible. Is that through an average of what they get donated as well? And, and we'll have conversations because post this, we'll have an act of action report just because that's a process of the Department Operations Center and see how we can help them. If they're feeding 42,000 meals during the course of a month, I think it's important that the county and, and cities and community are partnered with them to make sure they can be most effective. And then lastly, one thing came up and although when you get CalFresh benefits, you don't necessarily get transportation, there was a disruption in how people were going to procure their food. We literally called MCAG, Merced County Association of Governments in the morning and by the afternoon, their director, Stacy Guzman, said, we can help. We can provide free transportation through the bus, at least through November 13th. That's where my authorities end, but we're going to get in front of our commission and our board and ask them for authorization to provide free bus transportation for at least as long as the government shutdown lasts in order to help out on a different tact, but it will save folks money if they don't have to drive. So we did outreach to 103 of the largest grocers with 500 flyers that had a QR code linked to our website and 100 posters so that they could put those up in their lobbies. And, you know, we didn't want a, a mother to have a shopping cart full of items and, and be in checkout line without understanding that this had... So we created a plan, lastly, it can end here. We created a plan as a department, as a director of a department, my overriding responsibility is the safety of our, our teams and, and making sure they can still complete their mission of improving the wellbeing of the community through service and partnership. And when I listed the last five minutes worth of partnerships, that's us still completing our mission, although we're not going to be issuing or handing out any food items, we're in partnership are going to be meeting that need. So we created a lobby traffic plan in case those 9,000 households came to any of our three lobbies, including here in Los Banos. And I would say somewhat unexpectedly, our lobby traffic was normal. There were not a, there was not a huge turnout of families coming in. I think the communication plan from the state and us locally really helped just keep people informed, oriented, where they needed to go. And obviously we've seen a, a big uptick, uptick in food pantry utilization. So really a multi-pronged approach, which was one of the reasons, again, we opened our Department Operations Center. When we sat down with the, the, the planning team and started talking about doing outreach and coordinating and, and food drives and food distribution, we knew that we were going to have to resource this as well as possible, as well as, as, as managed public messaging. On that website, you'll find 18 fire stations, including here in Los Banos, Station 71 on H Street, where community members who would like to contribute food items can go to. And then lastly, at our website, you'll, you'll be able to, well, you can call 211 and access them anytime. And why that was such an important resource and something we learned through COVID with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, we were engaging with households who were like, hey, I paid my rent. I don't have, you know, rental arrears that you can help me out with, with this pot of money for that, but I have $15,000 in credit card bills because I couldn't, you know, I wasn't working for whatever reasons, but I used that to pay my rent. So we identified quickly, 211 has resources not only for utility and rents and, and housing costs and food referrals, but also behavioral health and some of these others, services that might be needed in a time of disruption like this. So, I mean, in conclusion, I, I think what this highlighted for me as a new director was the community resources that are there outside of our mandated responsibilities as a human service agency and moving forward, how we, even in the best of times, you know, food insecurity is a real issue here in Merced County. How in the best of times can we make sure we're partnered as closely with the food bank and some of these food pantries and 211 to make sure community members know where the resources that are available here through, through so many different agencies are accessible? So with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and, and also express some appreciation. Your, your city's the first one that reached out to us and said, hey, come out here and help inform our community, help keep our council members informed. And I think that's an important part of what we all do as public servants. So I do appreciate the fact that you invited us here. I know we have tried to keep you as well informed as possible, but, you know, the citizenry behind me also needs that information. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. We appreciate being so proactive on this, these trying times for these people. Scott, do you want to end it up? And if there's any questions by the council, we ask Scott, John?
John will be the one that probably gets to answer all the questions. But just in closing, what I want to say is, is, you know, our community, time and time again, when, when we faced a challenge, we've always come together. And so really the plea is today is, is like, if you need help, there's resources. If you're able to help, the food bank, what, what Director Chekely said, it's amazing what I can go to the grocery store and buy something for. They buy in such volume that they're buying stuff at such a cheaper rate and this is going to continue. Even if the government opens tomorrow, there's still going to be that need there. So the ask is, is if you're fortunate enough and you have a little bit of extra resources, please donate to the food bank, cash or food. The food helps in the immediate, the cash helps them in the long term. And then also, those are the same places, Bethel Community Church has been a longtime food pantry here in Los Banas, that you can actually go get those resources and don't have to travel that far. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Supervisor Silveira and Director Chekely, I just want to thank you because your communications was right on point. I think right when we know that the government's shutdown is going to impact SNAP, you guys called an emergency meeting with all the city managers and informed us right away of the actions and stuff that you guys are going to take. So really appreciate the transparency and really come together during this time. So thank you guys and of course, CEO Mark Hendrickson as well.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that, Mr. City Manager. And then that is something that Mark Hendrickson said right away is, is we need to have these calls with the city managers and, and the mayors so that there is that communication so that, because you're going to hear it first here in Los Banas and you can pass that on to us. So thank you for saying that and recognizing.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming on. Okay, now we're going to go ahead and open up the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council and any items within the public, within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. I will give you, anyone that wants to talk on the P-Bid, I'll, I'll give you opportunity when we reach that item after the public forum to speak. But if there's some, anybody that would like to speak on any item besides the P-Bid, please come forward. You have five minutes to speak. Welcome, come, come forward, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, our city attorney, city manager, clerk, and others that have given their lives to public service. Having been in the city, county, school, special districts, local government business now, my wife would argue 57 years, I say only 56, I've got to say, this is very uplifting in many respects to our spirits. I don't care where you're from, all you have to do is hear the dedication. We have, in California, some would argue, six to eight thousand special districts. You've got 58 counties, 486 cities, a bunch of special districts, each one with their own board, council, whatever you want to call it, legal representation. And so to coordinate that is a massive, massive effort. That's what's got to be done. You've got 40 million people in California now and that is equal to, over the years, the entire population of the country, of Canada, give or take. So I'm really very grateful to all of you and to our guests, I guess, if you want to call them that, citizens, for showing the interest to show up and to revive our spirits because that's what we need in the country. We all feel that, don't we? Regardless of our political affiliation, we feel a need to be connected, we feel a need to do good, we feel a need to see the results of our hopes and our prayers. I should say that, I know my cues has corrected me on my timeline here, but I would say the late 60s and early 70s, serving in this community as a social worker and a probation officer in my young years, I had, had to be sent home for three weeks because I was not yet 21 when I was appointed. It's not about me, but it's about the welcoming spirit that I found on the West Side. Dos Palos, Los Banos, Gustine and Home. We had one car and a little baby. My wife consented to give me the car. She in turn had a bicycle with a kiddie seat on the back of it. Some of you remember that. I doubt very many of you. I won't go into all the experiences, obviously. When I arrived, we had Sam Benedettino. I recognize the tremendous participation with the schools. We had Sam Benedettino is our, in this community, our superintendent of schools. And our police chief was Loris Broderick. Real quick story, you know, one minute left. Okay, so Los Banos, Dos Palos, Gustine and Home. Neron, you would appreciate that. That was the route. And I got, I got to tell you, one day I, I walked into the chief's office and I said, chief, why did they call this the West Side? And he became quite irritated with me and he went up to a map and he, he said, this is Merced County. This is the jurisdiction that pays your salary. Oh, I said, okay, chief. So I'm going to give you a real quick lesson on water. You take the Sacramento River and all of its tributaries and eventually it winds its way south into the Delta. You take the San Joaquin River, it goes north, picks up additional supply, also meets at the Delta. Remember that. I have. I have managed many cities, the County of Merced for a while, six years, five years, six years. I spent 35 years there and I am most grateful to see the fruits of your labors in the city of Los Banes. You've got a lot of stuff going for you here. I refer to the city as an outpost and I've got to say, I think you have an excellent city manager appointed. Treasure him. When I left here, oh, well over two years ago, he had 44 projects. And I said, Neron, how did this happen? He said, well, boss, most of them came from you. So please take a little better care of your managers and that. I say that from my heart. Thank you very much.
Great comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Hello, hello. Carlos Flores, I missed you guys last time. Anyways, District One. Today I have two things I want to talk about, all right? The first one is the homeless. I talk to them often and I try to find out what's going on with the situation with them, right? Last time I spoke to Abba Bow at the park, again, we talked about many, many different things, all right? And so one of the things we talked about is the tiny homes. Like when are they going to actually, actually get some dignity and actually get some housing for them, right? I know you guys put that little piece of patch over there with tents, right? No trees, no shade. I don't even know if there's showers out there, right? And the thing that kind of makes me frustrated a little bit is every morning you guys, every day, you guys start off the city council, you guys start off with a prayer, right? But the thing is, is you guys are truly religious and you guys truly follow the teachings of God. God was a social worker and he cared for everybody, it didn't matter what, or Jesus, didn't matter where you came from, right? So the thing is, is that when I spoke to him about, he said that you guys possibly might have had land over there by Gilbert Gonzalez for the tiny homes, right? And so I don't know how much money you guys got from the grant or whatever from the state of California for the homeless, right? I'm hearing 11 million, I'm not sure if that's correct or not, right? But the thing is, is that here comes another winter and they're still out there. But the thing is, is that here comes another winter and they're still out there, right? And I know, like the guy said, the federal government works slower than city governments, right? But there's seven city council people here, right? And at the same time, if there's a need for something, right, and the community really needs it, why does it take so long to get these things done? Like, for instance, how long has it been since you guys received that money from, from the state for the homeless? And why has it taken so long to even, even talk, I mean, get it done, right? And so I'm just going to, I just want to say something because I was out there with the homeless yesterday at the east end of the trail. And so I was speaking to them, right? And so the code enforcement went out there, right? They were cool, but at the same time, they said, "You know what? We're giving you guys 24 hours to vacate," right? And supposedly you guys have given those people a lot of notices to vacate, right? And then I sit back and I go, "What's the problem? Like, why don't you guys want to go over there?" Right? And they said, "Well, it's right next to the police department." First of all, like, we're being babysat. Second of all, they get to come in here or into our tents or they do, they do whatever they want, once we, they come over here. So there's no privacy, right? Knowing the homeless, they have addictions, they have mental health issues, they have a lot of different things. I know you guys had the resource guy come in here. I am, I work for ECN, and Merced County. All the services that they're saying, they're, it's, it's, it's not true. We have three places for food here, right? And the Salvation Army is one of them, and nobody even likes to go over there because most of the food is expired or going to be expired. So the stuff we're giving them is garbage, you know? And so the thing is, is that, not only that, when I was sitting there, the homeless go, "You know what? Let me see what amendments they're violating. How are they violating my amendments?" Right? So I got educated yesterday, the Eighth Amendment, cruel and unusual punishment. You know what the code enforcement told these people before he left? If they don't vacate? You guys know exactly what they said. They said, "If you don't leave, we're going to arrest you." So homelessness is becoming a crime now? Not everybody can live in this world. Not everybody can live in this system that was brought to us. Not everybody can do this. But in our minds, everybody who has money and wants to make decisions thinks that everybody can get along on the ship and everybody can just, you know, live a great life. And it's not true, especially people of minorities, right? It's not, it's not even playing field still. It's not. Right? When, when the police derive from the slave patrol and we have violence against the community and we understand why, it comes from the slave patrol. What did the slave patrol do? The same thing the police are doing. And ICE, and DHS, using violence. But they say they're Christians. We're God-loving people. Where? Where from? So I'm here to find out. And, uh, 'cause I told them, "I'm going to advocate for you guys." I even told them, "Come." And I keep encouraging them to keep on coming. I want them to speak, because they're people, right? The second thing I want to talk about is the gas prices in this town. We're being price gouged. And I know capitalism, capitalism is take advantage of what you can. I was at Winchester Mystery House two weeks ago, right across the street from Santa Ana Row. You know how much I got the gas for, right across the street from Santa Ana Row, people? $3.97. And we're commuters, so the people who own those gas stations are taking advantage of the community. Especially in these hard times, people are buying houses for $400,000 here that aren't worth a damn. They're falling apart, right? But the thing is, is that we have to pay that money and the people who own those gas stations know what they're doing and they're charging those prices because they know we got to commute. And when you talk to those people going over the hill, they're saying, "What the hell is going on with Los Baños? Why are we being ripped off?" That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hello, and good evening, Council of Los Banos. We, the officers of Pacheco High's Thespian Society, are here today, tonight, to present to you the fall play, the upcoming fall play that we've, we've been working very hard on the past few months. The Outsiders. It will be premiering just next weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 6 o'clock, and tickets will be $8. Oh, on Saturday, there'll be two shows, 12 and at 6.
Wow.
Yeah. Cool. Anything else?
Um, I just wanted to say, at Pacheco, we're working on hopefully doing three showings of different types. This one is a play, we're hoping to do a one act and hopefully a musical. We're hoping the community of Los Banos is able to come and at least enjoy theater in these times, because even when everyone has to deal with having to go to work, struggle, eat, pay their bills, sometimes not even make do, sometimes just sitting down and enjoying something that's just nice to look at and enjoy and just make you forget about your worries, just helps you get through the day just a little bit more. So if we're able to provide that here at Pacheco through even just a simple play that we've worked a couple months on, then we would love for you to see you there.
Fantastic.
Uh, one last thing.
Sure.
I forgot to mention that tickets can be bought upfront at the door or online on our website if QR code, if you scan the QR code. Uh...
Well, we'd like to leave this here.
Well, we can leave this here.
Yeah, we could leave, you could leave it to the city clerk and she'll make sure she spreads, spreads around.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. That's for the night. Anyone else would like to, oh, hi, Baj.
Hello, good evening. I live in the downtown area, but I wanted to, I was given a request from the Elks Lodge that we are inviting all veterans to our luncheon, and it's actually going to be tomorrow. We'd love for you to come and participate in this luncheon. It's to honor all veterans and service members. They do have a choice of bringing a guest with them. It's a complimentary meal, but if you bring like five people, just know that some of them will be charged 15 bucks. It is spaghetti with meatballs, salad, garlic bread, and dessert. If you have any questions, please call the Elks Lodge, but we do this every year and it's a great joy to honor our veterans. My second thing that I'd like to talk to you about is, if you notice, I'm kind of dressed a little bit. I had the honor last week and this week to do some animal transporting, and I do it on a regular basis, at least once a week. But, what I want to let you know again is that this, whenever an animal gets surrendered or comes to the shelter, the shelter individuals are right on top of calling rescues, um, because they want to help out. There is a time period where someone, when an animal comes in, there is a time period that's on hold for someone that doesn't own the animal. But if the animal's injured, if the kitten is under eight weeks old, if the dog is under eight weeks old by law, they need to go to rescue first. But there are rescues that definitely need, want some animals, so anywhere from Southern California all the way, like today, I got to go to San Francisco and afterwards Redwood City. And it is, again, such a wonderful task to do as a volunteer, because your personnel are on the phones, calling these individuals and getting these animals that may not be adopted, um, out so that they can have a forever home. A second point that I'd like to make is just a thought that's been, and I, and I don't know, I know this is, I, I don't know who to talk to about this, is that I have a thought that we do have our airports and we have pilots that are, sometimes they're asked there and, you know, they fly in and out of there. But if possible, if we could create like a type of flyer, inviting, um, inviting pilots that if they wish to volunteer, um, to travel with a, a dog that needs, or a cat that needs to be rescued. If they're going to a certain area and they give the shelter enough notices, I'm pretty sure the shelter will be right on top of getting them to a different location. And if we just put up a simple flyer, we, we might get a few people, but at least we'll be saving additional lives. But like I said, I don't know, other than asking you, asking our new city manager and the council and the staff, you know, how we could get that accomplished. But just wanted to mention that. Thank you for your time.
Good idea.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Please come forward. Welcome again.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council, City of Los Banos. My name's Carthage Prusath, here on behalf of Congressman Adam Gray. And I always like to say, a day I get to go to Los Banos is a good day. And that was no different last Saturday during the Veterans Day Parade. It was very, very fun, the, just, man, the amount of support the community shows out for the veterans every year. If that doesn't make you feel like an American, I don't know what will, because that was just awesome. And it was, we're very grateful to be able to play our part and help pass out water and be able to help out in any way we can. So just wanted to extend a thank you to the VFW and the Legion for just putting on a just really good parade. It was just so much fun. But the main reason I'm here today is to actually ask the council and city for some support. This summer Congressman Adam Gray introduced the Protecting Health Care and Lowering Costs Act to protect access to healthcare for Valley families. The bill was a response to HR1 and would have reversed all healthcare cuts that were passed into the budget bill and extend the Affordable Care Act's enhanced premium tax credits. With 4 million Californians set to lose their healthcare coverage and another 1.7 million set to see premium increases of 66%, this is a critical piece of legislature that will help keep care within reach for families in our Valley. We hope that you will consider endorsing the bill, and we actually sent it over to the city earlier last month, I believe, alongside a one-pager and a draft letter of support. And we hope that the city might be able to endorse the bill and help us get this passed as would really benefit a lot of folks in the Valley, as I'm sure you heard in some of the earlier presentations today. Don't hesitate to reach out to us if you have any questions or concerns. Our office is still open, we're still operating as usual over 602 West 20th Street in Merced. You can find our number, email address, everything you need online, and we're more than happy to answer any questions anyone has. And yeah, thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to speak? Come forward.
I wanted to speak for the community that I live in the apartment complex. I wanted to let all you, um, like ma'am and sirs of the complex where I stay and others are having to not be saying anything whatsoever. And me and my father was here on the 31st, spoke to this young gentleman Oriental here in the city hall, and he had recommended me and my father to come in to the, um, to the meeting of the community, to let the community know what is going on at the complex. It will be the MacArthur Apartments. And it's having to, me and my father is having to tell the manager about the lighting of the posts of what has not been resolved over two and a half years. And the manager said, "Oh, um, the light posts is, um, all the fixtures is getting, um, shipped to, of, within the, um, what's that called? Home Depot." But it doesn't take that long to have light fixtures of the light posts to be shipped. And other things that is having to go in around that complex and all the drug sales, the drugs things, of, of having to, um, to, um, experience others experiencing, and I want to be the, um, the voice of the silence of that they are not speaking of it because they're afraid of the retaliation at that complex, and it's not right and it's absurd. And the manager and the maintenance guy needs to get dealt with accordingly by justice of all what is having to go through, um, in that complex. And the tenants are not saying anything because they're afraid, and they're afraid because of their, of their retaliation, and that there is wrong. And, and like the light fixtures, and me and my father has stated that it's been over two and a half years and it's nothing we're getting resolved. And I have pictures of what, of the, of the lighting that needs to get replaced and, and others of the tenants are telling me what is going, um, that they need to get replaced. And mostly tenants is having to say what they are telling me they should tell the manager, but they're so afraid. They need to speak up, but they not speaking up because they are afraid of retaliation or having to come across of getting evicted. And the manager don't give a jackspit about other tenants. She just gives a, a jackspit of what she wants to come across in getting her money and then I'm locked gone. That's my job of being the manager and not care about anything about the tenants. Bringing in the money, that's what I, um, will be what's her mentality. And it's not right, it's wrong. And what it needs to come across with other tenants that are telling me of the maintenance guy, and I've seen it for myself of the maintenance guy, he don't do anything whatsoever in that complex and having to fix what he needs to get, um, of having to be working as a maintenance guy and, and, and the tenants are saying, he doesn't really, he doesn't really do anything of, he just does fast jobs. And it is, it's, it's wrong. And I tell the tenants, you need to speak up, you need to speak up what is right and what is wrong. And now you can't be relying on me and having to say, um, telling me that I'm not the manager. If I was, oh yes, I would come across in getting things done properly and having to know what it is and what it is supposed to be. And, and the maintenance, if I was a manager, I would fire that ma, um, the maintenance guy right there and then of not performing correctly and, and, um, to know what is, um, needs to be, get done at the complex. And he, he doesn't do a good job, he does half right, fast jobs. And, and I just wanted to make everyone aware what is going on at the complex, especially at the complex at the Harris Village, they're having to do, having to experience the same thing from that manager too. And it's not right, and it's absurd.
Yeah. So go ahead and give those papers to our city clerk, your name and number, and the city will visit. Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else come, like to speak to the city council, please come forward, you're all Welcome.
Hi, thank you, council, city staff, mayor. I'm here on behalf of a fellow resident who wanted me to read off something that's important or her. But first, before I read this, I want to say, uh, thank you to the VFW and Legion for putting up the Veterans Day Parade, and thank you for the community members who are stepping up for those people who are having a hard time with the, the whole government shutdown. It's, it's really, yeah. Okay, so, before I read this, I'm gonna say, speak in Spanish. Para mi comunidad hispana, los que tienen miedo para venir a hablar, o los que tienen o no pueden venir por sus preocupaciones o lo que sea, estoy aquí yo para presentarlos a ustedes, a escuchar, a leer, a, como se dice? Disculpa por mi español, no es lo mejor, pero puedo hablar y puedo comunicar muy bien. Somos más de 70% de mexicanos, latinos, hispanos aquí en Los Baños y Los Palos. Y si tienen problemas, aquí estoy yo para poder ayudar, puede, puede, poder decirle al alcalde, a los council members todo lo que ocupan decir. Okay, here I go. On behalf of a fellow Los Banos resident, we're gonna talk about chickens. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm speaking today on behalf of a Los Banos resident and a small business owner who loves his community's agricultural roots and values sustainability. She's asking the councils to consider updating city regu- regulations to allow residents to keep a small number of backyard hens, not roosters, within the city limits. Many larger cities across California, including San Jose, Fresno and Modesto, already allow hens responsibly and with great success. And those city, and if those cities can do it, surely a small agricultural-based community like Los Banos can as well. Allowing backyard hens would bring several benefits. It encourages sustainability and local food production by giving families access to fresh, healthy eggs. It provides educational opportunities for children to learn about responsibility and agriculture. It supports local businesses and home bakers who value using fresh, high-quality ingredients. We understand that there may be concerns about noise or cleanliness, but hens are actually very quiet and much quieter than dogs or lawn mowers. With clear regulations, these con- these concerns can easily be managed. For example, limiting hens to three or six per household depending on lot size. Requiring coops to be clean and closed and placed at least 15 and 25 feet from neighboring fences. Prohibiting roosters altogether to prevent noise issues. Then, this proposal, this proposal aligns perfectly with Los Banos agricultural heritage and our community's commitment to responsible, sustainable living. On behalf of the resident, we, we respectfully ask the council to consider drafting ordinance that allows backyard hens under clear, responsible guidelines. Thank you for your time and for listening to a proposal that will be, that will let the Los Banos residents continue to practice the agricultural values that make our city special. Yeah, that's what she had to say. Thank you, council, mayor, city staff.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, uh, before I close the public forum, we have some letters, correct? Or is that all P-bid? There's no, none for just the public forum? All P-bid? Okay. Because we'll give you an opportunity to speak when we reach out. We will be doing the, the consent agenda, then we'll go into the P-bid. So at this time, I'd like to close the public forum and go back to the city council. Consideration approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on with one motion unless removed by a city council member for further discussion. So with that, Lucy, if you can, discuss what's on the consent agenda this evening.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 254152 through 254494 in the amount of $2,929,886.15. First quarter investment report for 2025, 2026. City Council Resolution Number 7008, accepting the Transportation Development Act funds financial statement for the years ended June 30, 2018 and 17, as prepared by Price, Page and Company, Merced County Association of Governments auditors. City Council Resolution Number 7009, approving the radio tower license agreement between the City of Los Banos and the County of Merced, authorizing Merced County to install and operate public safety radio communications equipment on the city-owned telecommunications tower located at the Los Banos Fire Department. City Council Resolution Number 7010, awarding the bid for the purchase of two new 2026 model half-ton pickup trucks with lift gates and authorized to issue a purchase order in the amount of $106,060.20 to Faro Automotive Group DBA Fairfield Chevrolet. City Council Resolution Number 7011, awarding the bid for the purchase of a new 2026 model half-ton crew cab truck and authorized to issue a purchase order in, in the amount of $48,457.99 to Faro Automotive Group DBA Fairfield Chevrolet. City Council Resolution Number 7012, awarding the bid for the purchase of a new 2026 model mid-size crew cab four-by-four truck and authorized to issue a purchase order in the amount of $41,642.63 to Faro Automotive Group DBA Fairfield Chevrolet. City Council Resolution Number 7013, accepting the Eastern Application Field Irrigation piping replacement project in the wastewater treatment plant as complete, authorizing the filing of the notice of completion, authorizing release of retention and approving a budget amendment to increase appropriations in the wastewater treatment fund by $110,320.90. City Council Resolution Number 7014, acting as the City of Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency, authorizing the city manager to execute the Delta Mendota Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency's Joint Powers Authority Agreement. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, and does city council have any items they want to remove or ask a question of?
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
So it's on 7E, 7F and 7G. So I'm looking, you know, to be educated and understand. I just wanna... So it looks like all three of these are being awarded to a place, uh, in Fairfield, correct? How, how does the process work exactly as far as the, uh, you know, I know we've done this bidding before and stuff, but how can we choose, you know, I know there's some, some leeway there. You, you give, you know, a certain amount for the local. But I'm also, you know, the reason I'm asking the question is because, you know, I know you've got the, you know, you want to support local. And I know Santos has been second in a lot of these and that's the only local place here. Um, some of those tax dollars would come back here. Some of it goes into the county. Still comes here, Measure B, stuff like that. But then there's also you supporting the jobs that are there, that are still in this town, um, even if we're paying a little bit more. But I don't, that's why I'm asking the question because I don't know if there's certain rules where it gets awarded a certain way. I know some of this, some of these were out just because they didn't meet the, uh, what you're looking for in the criteria and stuff like that. But, uh, did Santos meet any of those?
Yeah. William, go ahead. Answer that.
Um, yes. Um, in, in Santos's bid, they didn't meet, um, there was one where even with, when we give, gave them the 5% local, um, uh, for, for using local, they still didn't meet the engine size requirements, um, that were in the bid specs. They didn't meet the, the, the bed size requirements on at least one of them. And they couldn't meet the timeline of 60 days that was put in the bid documents. They were between 90 and 120 days out, uh, because they had to order them. Um, and, uh, Faro Automotive Group had all four of these vehicles on their lot. So as soon as we, um, issue a purchase order, they can be delivered.
And that's for all, all of them?
For all four of them, correct.
Trying to keep some local business for you, some tax dollars, but mainly to support the, the local business, the jobs we have here. That's why I'm asking that question. Is there anything else that could be done in these types of scenarios? It looks like we're closed, but, you know, just to keep that in mind for the future.
Well, for vehicles, all those tax dollars would come to the location where the vehicle's going to be used, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So we will get this, don't they?
Where it's, where the vehicle's registered?
Registered. So it's gonna be registered here.
All right.
We'll get those tax dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, please.
Mayor, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. As stated, if there are questions or comments, and here in any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we will now move on to item, item 10, the update and auditing services request for the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, the P-bid. But this will go to our finance director, Moreno.
Uh, good evening, mayor, council members. Tonight I'm presenting the update on the audit process, including background, which will involve some staff analysis and documentation. For council consideration. On May 7th, the council approved the renewal of the P-bid agreement and directed staff to initiate a comprehensive audit from inception to pres- to present. Between June and August, staff collaborated with the P-bid representatives, gathered financial reports and tax returns. On September 7th, we issued solicitations to three qualified audit firms. Of the three firms contacted, two submitted proposals. One declined because they were too busy. Cost estimates for a full six-year audit ranged from $60,000 to $66,000, exceeding the city's informal procurement threshold of $30,000. To remain fiscally prudent, staff explored scaling down alternatives with the lowest-cost respondent, which was Price, Page and Company, CPAs, who offered three distinct engagement options. The first one was a compilation engagement. It's, uh, proves no assurance and is limited to identifying obvious errors and preparing financial statements with footnotes. This would, uh, cover the six years in a biannual report as estimated cost of $27,500. However, it does not meet the city council's intent for audit level validation. The second one was a review engagement. The second offer, um, is limited assurance through analytical procedures and inquiries. It covers four years. While more robust than a compilation, it does not include fraud detection or internal control testing and therefore falls short of the full audit standards. An audit engagement for option three, um, provides the highest level of assurance. It includes internal controls testing and covers fiscal year 23, 24 and 24, 25 with a partial testing of the initial cost of 22, 23. The estimated cost of that would be $28,500, which remains within the city's informal procurement threshold. Staff recognizes the council's primary goal is to validate the accuracy and reliability of the P-bid's financials. After evaluating all options, staff determined that the only full audit meets this objective. However, given cost constraints, option three offers a practical balance between responsibility and audit integrity. Council has three paths moving forward. Issue a formal RFP for a full six-year audit estimated at $60,000 to $70,000. Proceed with option three, a two-and-a-half-year audit within the $30,000 threshold, or provide alternative direction to staff. Staff's recommendation is to do option three. This approach delivers high assurance while remaining within procurement limits. The $28,500 cost will be offset against future P-bid disbursements agreed upon with the, uh, Downtown Association per the city's agreement with them. If audit findings are warranted, we can retroactively do a review. Staff will initiate additional audits. Annual audits will be conducted moving forward to ensure continued oversight and compliance. Council discussion and motion, we have proposed, um, two, um, options. Uh, one would be to do the full audit and, um, and do an RFP. The second would be to direct staff to proceed with option three, initiating a 2.5-year audit that falls within the city's informal procurement threshold with the understanding that the retroactive audits may be necessary and that the annual audit conducted moving forward, uh, we will ensure an oversight and comply. So we welcome any discussion or propose motion.
Okay, so just to remind everybody that this is about, uh, the council had directed staff to look into, uh, having an audit of the Downtown Association. And that's what this is about. It's not about the Downtown Association and taxes and things like that. So at this time, anybody that's opposing, actually, I'm gonna do it the other way around. Anybody in favor of the audit, come forward and you have three minutes to speak to the city council before we discuss what's, what's going on. So you're all welcome, but if you're in favor of the proposal or you have a favor of a certain option, we want it, the council wants to hear that. I'll give you five minutes. You sure can. In fact, the reason why I was moved up is because of you. Yeah, well, a lot of, a lot of business here at the, at the podium at the council. So we appreciate you coming forward.
Carolyn DiEra, and I'm here to speak about the P-bid.
Okay.
I recently visited with several business owners trying to understand DTA, that's Downtown Association. P-bid, you've heard that, that stands for Property Beautification Improvement District. And the city, that's Los Banos. But who is the city? Who, who actually makes the vote? What I learned was that the DTA, the Downtown Association, was started as a grassroots organization. No salaries, no mandatory assessments, no paid employees. A couple of years in, a local business person decided to hijack this volunteer organization and thus began officers, maps and assessments. And the P-bid, Property Beautification Improvement District, was added. And that's business maps, districts conjured up by whom and when. I never got the answer to that and rules and taxes began in earnest. Meanwhile, the city of Los Banos owned the majority of square footage on the map. I don't know who drew this map, how it was decided. So when it was time to say yes or no to continuing P-bid for another 10 years, even after the majority of business owners downtown voted to not extend another 10 years, it was passed because, of course, because the city had the majority of votes. Meanwhile, we're at the point where the DTA, Downtown Association, evidently can decide to add insult to injury by assessing hard-working businesses up to 3% every year to the extra taxes we already are required to pay. I believe that ta- tax does not have to be, and I think there's provisions that could be less or not at all. That's it. Help.
Carolyn, before you leave, are you in favor of an audit or are you against it?
I'm in favor of an audit.
Okay, thank you.
And I have, I made the rounds and I, I presented Lucy with, um, we have at least eight signatures and I got three more tonight.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yeah, we will read those letters at the end of this. Thank you. Come forward. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Duties. I'm here representing the Art Fellows, um, over this, we're a pretty big player in this organization as far as the assessment goes. Um, over the 10 years, our assessments over $82,000. Yeah, it's over $8,000 a year. That, that's a lot for, uh, one business. You know, last May, when the city assigned the Los Banos Downtown Association the continued management of these assessment funds, I, I provided my dissatisfaction with not only the formation of the district, but the expenditures of the funds. I want to reiterate that the council approved this based on, uh, Councilman Lewis's at that time. She supported that our concerns and said, we should have an audit. So thank you for proceeding with this. I know that the audit expense will be borne entirely from the P-bid funds, not any funds coming from the city. coming from the city. I'm concerned that the expenditures that we have right now are not in compliance with the PBIT contract. The funds are to be restricted for use for the revitalization as defined by the assessment agreement provided by CISA. You know, expenses, they're to be divided into three categories. Administration operations, fifteen percent. Marketing and placemaking, forty-two and a half percent. Maintenance, general, and security, forty-two and a half percent. Now, this budget cannot be adjusted more than twenty percent between the categories. I noted that the budget that is currently provided to us added a fourth category and nine compliance with the agreement. It's called small infrastructure. Also, I want to comment that these assessment funds should not be loaned or commingled with another entity, namely the Los Banas Downtown Association. A requirement of this agreement is to provide an annual budget. The budget that I have received did not provide any detail of what the expenses were anticipated. What it did is it simply estimated the amount of the taxes that would be received and divided it by four categories, twenty-five percent each, which is only supposed to be three categories. Now, we wouldn't have this discussion of, you know, need of an audit if they could provide simply, you know, five reports that we could review on a quarterly basis. One would be a profit and loss. Second would be a balance sheet. Third would be a general report. The fourth would be a budget fiscal year-to-date. And last, the fifth, would be a twelve-month trailing profit and loss statement. If we had those, five reports, four times a year, audits would be very simple, maybe not needed. But after five years of these assessments, collecting over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, I don't see those improvements. I see thirty planners at fifty-one thousand dollars, benches at twenty-five, trash cans at twenty-four thousand, security cameras at eighteen thousand, and this is what we get for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I'm going to try to cut this a little shorter, but please make sure that I'm not inferring that there's any misappropriation or fraudulent activity for these funds. That's the farthest thing from my mind. And I understand that we all do not agree the best way to spend assessment funds, or any budget for that matter. Yet compliance to the terms of the PBIT and the assessment contract must be adhered to. So please continue with the pledge to require the audit, and I support the city's recommendation for the two-and-a-half-year audit. I think that that's adequate, and if there are any fraudulent activities, they can do more. So I support it, but I also would like that audit to make sure that they're in compliance with the BBIT. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, I forgot to say that Bill Vaughn had to leave the dais because, the dais because he's a property owner within the PBIT, so it's a conflict of interest. Thank you.
I'm also in favor of the audit. I've been asking for ages for transparency to where the money goes. And what I presented the council is three different things. The first is a letter from their CPA, and this is in referring to the 2023 audit, that their auditing or their record-keeping did not meet regular approved accounting standards. And the second item is from the bylaws. States right there, at the end of the fiscal year, within a hundred and twenty days, they will provide you, the city, with an audited financial statement. Where are those statements? If you got those audited statements, this would not be coming up today. And the third one was when we asked in the spring for an audit and the records, the reply that we got to our audit request, which was saying that they would decide what and when they would give us, and to date, we haven't gotten anything. And at that time, we were supposed to get quarterly audits. July, nothing. September, nothing. We're on to another quarter. What is so hard about printing out and sending a statement? They keep their books on computer. They have an accountant. We should be entitled to the general ledger, the profit and loss, and a cash flow. Simple record-keeping is all we're asking. And since they've shown bad faith, they haven't applied by their own bylaws, I think we deserve a full six-year audit. And five years have gone by, and if they'd have done those audits, this would not be such a big expense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Frank Viera. I am the owner and my wife of Liz Beauty Salon in Los Banas, and I'm really disappointed in this PBIT thing. You know, when this was originated, okay, we were supposed to vote. We won unanimously. And what happens? They come back and says, no, we have to vote again because it's on square footage. Now, isn't that sweet? And now I'm sitting there paying from the back of my shop to the alley for space that I'm not getting paid a dime for. And I started out at a thousand, I mean, excuse me, I started out at, yeah, a thousand, and now I'm over twelve-hundred, and every time something is to be done, we're never notified. Somebody from the city told me that we were having this meeting tonight. I never got a notification, never got a letter, and on that three percent, why can't we vote? It's our money, not yours, not theirs, our money, but yet we can't vote on it? What happened to democracy? I don't think we got much of it. You know, this is really disappointing. You know, you're supposed to be helping it, helping us. You're cutting our throats. You're running us ragged, trying to make ends meet. We keep cutting back, and you guys keep raising the ante. I don't understand, but, you know, we've been in business, November first made fifty years, no thanks to the PBIT help, because they weren't around then, and I wish they weren't around now either. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kathy. I am not in the downtown. I don't have a business there, but I do run a business. I've read the reports from the PBIT on where they spend their money, and it does have huge holes in it. It just says we get X amount, and we divide it four ways. That's it. That is not a financial report. It's not a profit and loss that they're asking for, or where those payments have gone. So somebody had said to do a two-and-a-half year, but I would like to keep it open so that if you do find discrepancies, it's possible to go all the way back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff, fellow residents. I'm fully supportive of the audit as robust as possible. There needs to be a full accounting where our tax money is going. Right now, we don't see a lot of development. We don't see a lot of energy into the downtown area, and I fully support a more vibrant downtown. So again, I support the audit, and I want to thank Mrs. Lewis for pushing this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward. Yeah, when we're finished. Welcome.
Well, good evening, mayor, city manager, and council, and city staff. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to begin by saying that we welcome transparency, and we welcome the upcoming audit. Our budget is approximately a hundred and seventy-six thousand, and we operate with the same goal we have always had, to serve our downtown businesses, support local, and uplift our community through events, clean streets, safety, and economic growth. We operate responsibly, and we look forward to demonstrating that through the audit process. However, I also want to address the narrative that continues to surface, the idea that those people don't support this work. I think it's important to remind everyone that many people do support this effort. Our property owners who voted for the PBIT, our businesses who show up and participate, our community members who attend events, volunteers and board members who give their time, and our downtown partners who want progress, not division. Those voices deserve to be recognized just as loudly as the critics. Recently, we have experienced exclusion from discussions, decisions happening without our involvement and misinformation circulating that undermines the work that we are doing. These actions don't just hurt this organization, they hurt downtown. They hurt small businesses, and they hurt community trust. From the beginning, our goal has been to collaborate, not compete, to build, not divide. We are here to work with the city, not to be dismissed by it. My ask tonight is simple. Treat us as partners in the success of downtown Los Banas, include us in conversations that impact the district and the businesses we serve, and allow the audit to speak for itself without predetermined narratives. We stand here confident in our work and are committed to improvement where needed. We are not afraid of accountability. We embrace it. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing, a thriving downtown, community where businesses flourish and families feel proud. Let's move forward together with transparency, respect, and collaboration. Thank you. Have a great evening.
How do you feel on the audit?
I feel that it's needed. I think we embrace it. We just want you to take consideration our budget. That's really the most important, is to consider our budget. It's unfortunate that people are blind and they don't see what we are doing. I mean, if you go downtown right now, you see the beautiful lighting. That is the Los Banas Downtown Association. Let's talk about the ninety-nine thousand that I already brought in, from farm to table, which that money is still there, and it's up to the board of directors and our sponsors of how that money will be spent. Not only that, there's several things, the banners from Merced College or Partnership that brought us in over thirty thousand. There's a lot of great things that we are doing, so it's just unfortunate that those people have blinded, they're blinded is what I, you know, is the only thing I can say. But overall, we're extremely positive. We want to move forward, and we don't win. We win when we get the majority of the property owners on board, because what we're here for is for the property owners, for the businesses, and our community. And that's what we're here for, is to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward. Anyone else? Okay, I will close our public hearing. Turn it. I turn it back to the city council discussion, and I think, first of all... Correct. Keep me on the ball.
I have them over before three o'clock, but we...
We're fine, we're fine. You play by the rules, Carolyn.
I received an email from Mary Velata Brooks. Please vote in favor of the audit for the Downtown Association. That was delivered by email to me. And then I received, there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten letters, and they read, "To the City of Los Banas Downtown Association and the PBIT program. I am a businessperson within the PBIT zone. My business is affected by the PBIT assessment. We are in the PBIT district, have been promised a complete audit by the end of this year. We believe that we are entitled to this audit, and hereby demand that the audit be completed and submitted to us for review by the end of 2025." And it is signed by Leah Costa with Flor DeLeese, Kathleen Seamus, Health Time, Joanne Hofer, Sean George, Emil Diareca, Alfred Whitehurst, Trajan J. Sores, Maritza Lopez, Melissa Hernandez, Patricia Reyes, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I did text.
Yes, you were under your five minutes, so you can. Yeah, you have to come to the microphone now, I'm sorry. Elaine.
I think there's a lot of confusion here because of the way that you tied the two entities together. Because when Mary Bell was talking, she was talking about the Downtown Association, which is separate from the PBIT, but they run out of the same office, by the same board, and they intermingle the money, is what we've always objected to. Those should be two separate entities. Whatever they do on their fundraising, their nonprofit, we could care less. We're asking only about our tax dollars. Where are our tax dollars going? How are they being handled? As far as their nonprofit, the IRS or whatever can deal with them if there's a question. We're not questioning that. We're just questioning the tax dollars, and we want an audit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close. Yeah, we understand the frustration, but tonight, what we're talking about is the bid. So this was done by the past administration, and, but we're in charge now, and we want to make sure things are handled correctly. Of course, you know, I know people don't like to pay taxes. I don't like to pay taxes. No one likes to pay taxes. We're just trying to get into a point where we're all moving together in a positive way, and everybody that pays money and everybody that just visits downtown to all those new restaurants, hopefully show up real soon, enjoy it and can see it different. Now, a lot of people have said to me, you know, why doesn't the city just do this? Not the audit, but the Downtown Association. Why didn't the city run that? Well... Why didn't the city run that? Well, see, it's, why doesn't the city run the 152 corridor with all the businesses on that, too? So that's why there's Chamber of Commerce's, that's why there's Downtown Associations, because the city is responsible for all the citizens, not just certain businesses, and not just certain districts. So that's sort of the difficult thing here. But I want to go back to many, I want you to explain a little clearer. We understand it. The difference between what it would do to a six-year audit, you talked about the monies, you have to talk about going out for bids and things like that. Just explain that a little bit more.
It would take additional time to go RFP, and then finally get proposals in, evaluate them. We're probably looking in probably February, March to get it started. By doing the two and a half-year audit, we already have Price Page giving us the informal proposal, and we'd be able to get it started sooner. And if we do find any discrepancies or any findings, we still have the, as the motion that we're proposing, one of the motions that we are proposing you adopt is that we can go back and look at the other years. And moving forward, we'd have an annual audit as prescribed per the agreement. So it's gonna be able to save time. It's gonna, the $60,000 to $70,000 is an estimate. Those proposals can come in higher, depending on what the workload is of auditors. They can come in lower, but most likely, they could come in higher. And so that's why we think it's a good medium to go ahead and do the two and a half years, to be fiscally prudent to the association. And then, we can also establish it coming out of the assessment in partial payments, if you would like to make that motion, from maybe divided it into three and have it come out of their assessment in their assessment in January, their assessment in April, and then their assessment the next fiscal year, or three years out. So there's ways to be able to accomplish what we, what you or what your intention has been.
So basically, if we have to spend more than, or authorize more than $30,000 to be spent, we have to go the formal process of bidding, request for proposals, that takes months, you know? And we're trying to avoid that, so we can be, we can get things done to be fair with the Downtown Association and the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So that's why she's recommending that. But I want to turn it over to the city council. If you have any questions, comments, thoughts? Yeah, Evan?
So you got all the financial documentation from the P-Bid?
I did. I got summarized documentation, and I got their tax filings from the Downtown Association, which one of their, well, which their major program is the P-Bid within their tax return.
And you got that for the two and a half years, or for the full six years?
I got for the full six years.
And do you feel like it's, the documents are there to where they can be audited? Like, is it, I heard some comments about the records not being kept very well. Like, is there auditable documentation to be done with six years?
I believe the documentation that I feel will be there is the two and a half years.
So beyond that, is...
We can request it. I think the two and a half years will get us the documentation that we need to make the evaluation, or that the auditors would need to make the evaluation if there's any findings.
Okay, and then we could decide if we want to go all the way.
And then we can decide, yes.
Just a second. Tom, did you want, did I stop you? Did you want, did I cut off the public before you spoke? I want to be fair to everybody.
Tom Caljin, I just want to say, I mean, what we're trying to do here is improve the downtown. I'm spending thousands of dollars. There's nothing in it for me. The idea is to make our downtown more vibrant, and I think we've done it. We're doing it. If you look at the downtown today, there are more people down there. We've had a number of events downtown. We've got these cameras that are monitored 24/7. When somebody's doing something wrong, this guy's hollering at them over the speakers. We're pressure washing the sidewalks. We've put in some seating. We've put in the trash containers. We've brought in the man that's completely redone the old theater. He spent over a million dollars there. That was our association. The lady running it before the current person brought that guy in here, and it's made a tremendous difference to High Street. I just want to say, the only reason we're doing this is to try to improve our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, are you for against the audit? Are you for or against the audit?
No, I think we have to do it now. We have to have, there'll be some things that come up, I'm sure. The one that I can think of is that the Downtown Association, for two years during the COVID, couldn't raise a penny. They couldn't do anything to generate money. They're supposed to be, according to our agreement, paying half of her salary. Well, they weren't making any money, so that didn't happen. That'll all come out, but I don't think it's anything bad. It's just what happened.
Yeah, thank you. And if you couldn't hear on, at home, he said he was for the audit. Okay, further questions? Comments?
Thank you, mayor. So, to our financial director, based on the tax records and what you've received from the Downtown Association, in the first years of formation, are there any records that are missing or that cannot be obtained?
We wouldn't know that without conducting an audit. The records that you would do for an audit would be like resolutions, agreements. All we have is their financial data. So we have the financial data. We don't have the backup to that financial data. So without doing an audit, you wouldn't be able to request those documents from the association. But we feel confident that for the two and a half years, we can get those documents from the association. And therefore, the auditors can conduct their audit. If they find anything within the findings, they're, all of the accounts are consistent for the multiple years that are there. So we'd be able to request those audit, or those documents for the existing numbers on the balance sheet and the income statement that are there.
So, with any organization that falls, you know, under laws, rules, and regulations that the P-Bid portion falls under, whether or not they make any money during COVID, you know, which is what, you know, what we heard tonight, is that during COVID, there was not enough money made or no money made. You know, we, as a city, we still had to do audits during that particular time to account for our finances. What I'm concerned about is, I think the public, taxpayers, as well as the business owners, regardless of whether they made money or not, need to know what happened during that period of time. Now, you know, there's this proposal for two and a half years. In order for us to move forward in a more timely fashion, if this council decides to go for the full five years, it means we have to send it out to bid, and it may cost them anywhere between $60,000 and $70,000. I'm not trying to break an organization, but when we, as a city, do audits, we're required to pay what we have to pay. And so, I'm here as a representative to all the citizens of Los Banos, not just the business owners, but people who buy groceries, who pay gasoline, who pay property tax. They all contributed to this as well. And they're entitled to know what happened to this money, how it was spent, you know, being accurate or not, whatever the case may be. So, and again, I'm only one voice, and if this costs somewhere between $60,000 and $70,000 to get the full accuracy of an accounting, then I don't have issue with that. I think we owe that to the taxpayers, to the business owners. And I do recall that when we moved forward with this 10-year contract, or contract with the Downtown Association, that there were more people individually who voted no, not to renew it, than did. And it's only, the reason it passed is because everything is weighted by square footage. Your building, your parking lot, all of that is included in the weighting. And so therefore, the city, I think, is the largest property owner, and there's some individuals here within the organization, within the scope of the business community for the P-Bid, that own more than one single piece of property, or it may be square footage-wise, larger as a building. So, I'm still concerned about getting the full picture. I don't know how the business community feels about waiting extra time to get a true picture of the whole five, six years of an audit. And again, this council will make the decision about the two-year, two and a half years, which we can go forward with much quicker. However, for me, if that will be the decision, I certainly want some other extra additives built into the motion that if, and I think it's kind of implied that we will go forward with, you know, looking at the full five years if enough discrepancies are found. But I don't want it to have to come back to council again to ask for that to happen. I think we need to make that decision tonight. If discrepancies are found and we need to move forward with the full five years, that we will order that, and that we will order that it be paid by the Downtown Association. Collecting $750,000, and I think that was stated by the gentleman, from, I won't say IOF, but it's Odd Fellows, that's a lot of money collected, and compared to what was spent during that particular time. The Farm to Table, as was indicated, is their 501(c), and that's what they raised to do with whatever they want to do with. But I saw some records where there was money being borrowed from members of the board to meet expenses. So I'm concerned, as a council person, as to whether that was the 501(c) portion, whether it was the P-Bid portion. I don't know. If it's the P-Bid portion, then there's an issue with how money is being spent, and whether or not their budget is sufficient enough to do the things that need to be done. So, you know, there's, there were a lot of accolades about what they've done, and I thank them for the things that they've done. But I also know that there have been some things that were disruptive, like the merchants downtown complained when the tree trimming happened. And that was in the early onset. They were never notified. You know, some of the things I'd like to see is, when there are things that are going to be purchased, like pots or benches or whatever, talk to the merchants downtown. Get their input. It's not just a decision of the board. You're here to work with the merchants and to help build the downtown up. And I know it's going to take time to do that, and I hope we're on the right track for this. But right now, there's a financial concern. And I think we owe it to, again, all the business owners, all the property owners in the P-Bid area, as well as the taxpayers of the City of Los Banos, to know how money is spent. I really am not concerned about the accolades right now. It's wonderful, but this is about the money. And just as we have to be accountable to you as taxpayers, to you as business owners, the same thing applies to the P-Bid portion. And, you know, we have, what's the organization, mayor, that we have where we have to have a separate meeting? I'm sorry.
Redevelopment Agency.
Redevelopment Agency. When we have redevelopment agency agenda, it has to be a separate agenda from city council. We can't mix that stuff together. So, I suspect that it has to be the same for the Downtown Association slash P-Bid. When you're having a P-Bid meeting, that needs to be a separate agenda from your 501(c). And it needs to have the 72-hour posting, and it needs to be in a place where people can come and know that that meeting's going to be held each and every time at that location. So, I was for the full five years. We'll see where the council goes with this, whether or not they will go for the two and a half years, so we can get this done immediately and move forward. But if that's going to be the case, then I want to add in that if we move forward and there are discrepancies found within the audit, that we will automatically move forward with the additional years to make it the full five years, and that the fiscal burden to pay for that will automatically fall to the P-Bid portion of the Downtown Association.
And it is six years.
Is it six years? Okay. So I made, you know, I made a big point about all of this when we had our May 7 meeting, and my concerns. I don't want to have to go over that again. But the bottom line is, it's about the money. And transparency is very important in government today. I made that commitment when I ran. I know the mayor made that commitment as well. And it, to me, it doesn't matter who it belongs to. I asked for this information continually over the past three years here on council, and I was snubbed for it, and ignored, and asked people from the Downtown Association to come and speak at the lectern about what was going on regarding finances. And all we got were pie charts. So now we have this opportunity to give the business owners and the taxpayers what they've asked for, and I'm glad that some of the members of the Downtown Association agree that we need to move forward with this audit. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
So, I think it was Mark from Odd Fellows talked about, there's three categories: admin, marketing, and maintenance security. Now, there seems to be a fourth with the audit. Tell us if that's correct and all that good stuff?
The audit will.
All right. So then what happens if we find a fourth?
It will look at the management agreement, and it will determine if things were not paid per the agreement.
Okay. You know, just like Ms. Lewis is saying, you know, I'm not in favor of breaking any organization. That's not. And at the same time, you know, I think what she's saying is important as far as the two and a half. And if something's not looking right, then automatically, yeah, it kicks into the full deal. I mean, the way this has gone, look, I don't, you know, I barely started in January. I was the first hot topic the guy hit with this, and it's like, we're still working on this, and we're still trying to get somewhere with it. It's like, why is it so hard? And I think the only way forward is there has to be an audit, because you're not going to, you got to answer questions to everyone, both sides. I think it's best, in everybody's best interest. I'm not for either of the two sides. I'm just like, what's facts, what's truth, and what makes sense? And I think the only way to get there, unfortunately, at this point, is we got to get transparency, we got to get, you know, to the answers of what's really going on. And then, once that comes out, then what are the next steps, you know? If there are further questions, and if people aren't satisfied with what came out of that, then what's going to be next? I don't know. But I think we've got to go forward to get answers with an audit. I think that's going to be important to move forward. And again, you know, I'm not looking very P-Bid or anybody, not trying to cause more expense to anybody. But if we have to get to a six-year, I think that needs to be in, like Ms. Lewis said, for sure. But I think we got to do something right away, too, instead of wait and rebid the whole thing, and then wait some more, and it's just, I think it's dragging on here. So I'd like to get somewhere. That's, I'm not going to repeat everything she said, but those are my thoughts at this point. I don't know about you, Evan?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like the two and a half year, I think it's a great place to start. But I feel like the next time that we hear about this, it needs to either be, we did the two and a half year, everything looks great, or here's the resolution to the six, to go out to bid for the six-year. Like, I don't want to have to have a conversation again about, like, what are we going to do now? Like, it's either everything's good with the two and a half year, or here's the resolution. Like, it's either everything's good with the two and a half year, or here's the resolution to pass the six-year, just to keep things moving. I like the idea of doing the two and a half year, just so we get something done fast. We'll see if it comes back and it's, everything's hunky-dory. But, yeah, I don't think we should have the discussion again about what to do. I think that we know, I think we all more or less agree that two and a half year, start there, but immediately go to the six-year if that doesn't look great.
So the way the resolution reads right now is, direct staff to proceed with option three, to initiate a two and a half-year, a 2.5-year audit that falls within the city's informal procurement threshold, with the understanding that the retro audit, and the word is "may," I'd like to change that to "will be necessary," and that the annual audit conducted, moving forward to ensure continued oversight and compliance. So that's basically saying, and now they're on a fiscal year budget like we are. They were in the beginning annual, but that was changed. So just as our budget goes from July 1st to June 30th, so will theirs. And that means that it will kind of fall in line with the timeframe, so we will know what's happening at that time. I'd also like to add with that that the financial burden, if we do have to move forward with the full six years, will be on the P-Bid Downtown Association.
So the two and a half year and the six-year, it will all fall on the association?
Okay.
It's just a matter of payment of that.
So are we to determine tonight also how that's going to be paid out, whether it will be in chunks of when their money is being dispersed?
Yes.
Okay. Also, I'd like to recommend that staff report out to us once the audit comes in so that we know how we're going to move forward and not have to wait till the end, to keep us on board with how that's happening. So, yes, in order not to financially devastate them, I don't have a problem with, you know, X amount of money coming out of the distribution that they have coming to them. And I guess that's three distributions a year, is that it, or is it two?
It's two.
It's two. Okay. Okay. So that would be my proposal. And I know that it's moving forward, they're going to be required to have an annual audit.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So I heard, we heard from a lot of people in the audience, a lot of citizens, and they all agreed that at least a two and a half year audit. And I'm trying to look at this very pragmatically. Our goal is transparency, and the property owners and people that pay the taxes know what's going on, how the money's spent. And we could go to the past five, six years and wonder what's going on back then. Are we going to be able to even change in it? It's history now. I think two and a half years is plenty of time, and if we find something, we can go back, which it says that. But a six-year audit could pay, could cost up to $100,000. It says possibly 70, but we know how that works. When governments, when the government is, goes out to bid for the government, everything gets really expensive. And so my thoughts is, we do not want to stop the Downtown Association by burdening them with 70, 80, 90, $100,000 bills. That sort of defeats the whole purpose. Then we'll be back here in a year saying, what's taken place? Well, all the money has gone to paying for an audit. So that doesn't make any sense to me. I know staff recommended during the finance, when the payments come, I'd say we should even spread it out more than that, in my personal opinion. We do not want to hamper the Downtown Association to be more effective. What we're trying to do is be more transparent, and everybody knows what's going on, and I'm sure they're good people, they'll do that. I think that's what it is. It's not to, with the city controlling it, then we'll keep the ball moving, make sure things happen. And I know you trust us. You know, this is a new administration up here, and I know you trust us, and so we want to do the right thing. So I would not be in favor of anything more than a two and a half. I'd actually go two-year audit, but I'll go with the two and a half year, and I'd like to see it spread out over a couple of years, payment, payback to the city. That's what I would personally like to see, but it's up to the council, because I do not want to burden the Downtown Association. Even though, I know you can say, the reason is, why we're here today, I heard two or three people say, if there was better transparency, we'd not even be here today. That is very true. So, I mean, we're all going to get on the same page, get everybody working, and we've got to do this together. We all have to work together to make sure our downtown thrives. We get those new businesses in there that will stay open, and hopefully, like I said, hopefully we get some restaurants down there. That's, that and the small stores, really, and the hair salons, those type of things, you know, every time I cringe when another office comes downtown. And I don't have against offices, but, you know, they close up at four or five in the afternoon, and that's the end of downtown. But I understand you have the right, you own the property, you do whatever you want. But we need a vibrant downtown. So I'm in favor of spreading it out over a couple of years, doing two and a half year audit. I think everybody here was in favor of that. And then, if something, and I don't expect this, but if something comes up, it automatically triggers it. We don't even have to do that. So that's my thoughts on the matter.
Well, excuse me, Mayor, I think you're probably saying pretty much the same thing that the three of us have said up here already, with the exception of, and I'll just use a city in the state of California right now called Ileton, who's in big trouble because they kept no financial books, they made a lot of purchases and did things, and now they're trying to file bankruptcy. We have to learn how to hold people accountable. We're not trying to break a bat, but we have to learn how to hold any organization that's under the jurisdiction of the city accountable. And so I think this is the time where we have to start now. This is the time to start now. And yes, I think option number two is good for the two and a half years. And if we, if there's any inconsistency within the budget where, you know, and I noticed that in the proposals, one of them indicated, I think it was proposal two, review engagement, which talked about detecting potential fraud or material omission. But that was not in the audit agreement. So is that something that's automatically in the audit agreement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I may be the odd man out here, I don't know, but I think we owe this to the businesses. It's time to move forward and just, this might be the very thing that will help us get our city to the next level where it needs to be. Because, Mayor, you know, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars with, you know, plans on how we want our downtown to look. You know, when you were on mayor, I don't even know what happened to those plans. We had two of them since I've been on council, and we do absolutely nothing. So now here, we have an opportunity to have expectations of our Downtown Association and what their promises are when they came with the agreement. Because I'll sit here and openly admit, I really wasn't for this. But I was the very person that made the motion to start the Downtown Association. But I said, I will be watching you, because I wasn't really sure that the plans that were brought to this council about what you were going to do could be fulfilled. And so I was watching. And so this is where I stand on it. I think it's the ethical thing for us to do as a city, to make sure that we move forward with this audit and that the accountability and the tracking is good. This is, for me, this is not about whether these are good people or bad people. This has nothing to do with that. This is about what's right for making sure that tax dollars are open and transparent. So that's where I'll leave it, Mayor, and thank you for the additional time of comment.
Yeah, entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion, and it will be number three, to direct staff to proceed with option three, which has been stated. I'd like to change the word from "may" to "will" within that motion, and to additionally indicate that, to make sure that it's in writing, that the financial burden for the audit will fall on the Downtown Association if it's found to be that we need to go beyond the two and a half years, and that a annual fiscal audit will be required of the association moving forward.
And the payment plan?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. And the payment plan will be?
Two years.
In, I'm sorry.
Two years?
Two years.
Mayor wanted two years.
Okay.
I had said three payments, but Mayor wanted two years, so it'd be four payments.
We won't know if they'll be in business for four years, so, you know.
For two years.
Yeah, I'll go with two years.
Taxes will still come. Taxes come for 10 years.
Yeah, the taxes will be there.
So regardless of what happens with the Downtown Association, those taxes will come?
Yes.
Okay. So, question out of curiosity, what stops it? What, just in perpetuity? Those taxes will be collected no matter what?
For 10, it was for 10 years from whenever they renewed it.
It would come back to the governance of the city or another association or another.
So, yeah.
Yeah, but those will be assessed.
So if it's found that we still need to move forward with a P-Bid organization, then the city would go out and formulate another, another organization to continue the 10-year taxes?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that being said, then I don't have an issue with the four years. I don't know how the other council members feel, if they want to do two, three, or what.
So two years, four payments.
Two years, four payments. Okay.
That's part of your motion?
Yeah, I'll take that one. Yes.
Mayor, a quick clarification. I know there was discussions about bringing the audit report back to council. Is that part of the motion?
Oh, yes, I didn't say that. Yes, additionally, to bring the audit report back to council once it's been done, so that we, you know, we know that we're going to move automatically forward with the remainder of the additional years.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if I said that properly, but hopefully it can be understood.
Second, before we discuss? Or don't want a second? That's fine.
I want to ask a question. So right now, they're saying if something were to happen, and tax money still keeps coming, that goes to the end of the 10 years regardless? And then you're saying, so that tax money is there, then you're going to look for another association to handle that money?
That would be the thing to do at that time.
Is that the only option?
Yes, because the city would not be, we're paying the assessment, so we really need another association. We would need another association or a Chamber of Commerce or something, 501(c)(3) to be able to handle the P-Bid.
The Streets and Highways Code requires a 501(c)(3) to govern the P-Bid.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, as stated, and further comments? Questions?
No, I just think we got to, needs to happen. At this point, it seems like trust is broken, and we need to fix it, so.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And I really appreciate everybody that spoke very much. Thank you all very much. So we'll have the two and a half year audit. Make it straight.
Yes.
If you challenge the proposed action as described herein court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to this public hearing. A public hearing is to receive public comment and consideration of the 2025 California Fire Standard Codes. This is local city of Los Banos amendments to the codes and justification of local conditions. And let's see, who do we, Brendan? That's you?
Good evening. This is the first reading of the triennial code updates. This cycle occurs every three years and is aligned with the state adoptions. All cities and counties will have these hearings. These code adoptions require public notices that were sent out in October and posted in the Merced Sun Star. The code will be in effect January 1, 2026. We're updated, we have updated the current municipal code and ordinance to reflect these changes. This will be the first reading. As for the changes that were completed this cycle, were minimal. Examples of those changes were the wildland urban interface, energy storage systems, battery type definitions, fire clearance, pre-inspection, energy green, energy and green codes, electric-ready buildings. We are requesting the council to open up public hearing, take comments, close the hearings, and request to waive the first reading.
Thank you. So this is ordinance number 1211, adopting reference as stated with the 2025 edition of the California Fire Code. It's a routine item that comes up so we can match the state codes. So with this, I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1211.
I apologize, I think we're not done with the presentation.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I just had myself, sorry.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor, City Manager. I'm your Deputy Fire Marshal, Golicio. I'm here to just present a real quick couple of slides of brief overview of what the updates are this year. As we go through the slides, like Chief was saying, every three years, the National Model Code gets revised. This year, it aligns itself with the 2024 International Fire Code. Under the local jurisdiction, per the Health and Safety Code, 17958 and 18938, everything will align. Again, as Chief said, effective January 1, 2026, all codes become effective 180 days after they are published by the California Building Standards Commission, which was published July 1, 2025. Los Banos must adopt these codes to be in ordinance by January 1. Los Banos Municipal Code has 13 amendments by the Fire Code. They're subject, they're specific to us, and they're located within the Municipal Code, Title IV, Chapter 3.07. The 13 amendments are special to Los Banos and range from administration, cost recovery, assistance from other agencies, permits, inspections, plan review fees, NOCS boxes, automatic sprinklers, fire extinguishers, portable extinguishers, fire alarm systems, pallet storage, explosives and fireworks, storage of flammable or combustible liquids, and storage of LPG. Some of the changes for 2020 Some of the changes for 2026 are the pre-fire clearances that are clarified underneath the Health and Safety Code. What this does is this delegates the enforcement from the State Fire Marshal's Office to the local prevention office, which would be us, ourselves. Chapter 49 is the WUI Code, which was deleted from the California Fire Code as well as the California Building Code and is now its own California Wildland, Wildland Urban Interface Code itself. It's a standalone code now. It clarifies residential ESS requirements, which is energy storage systems. It just aligns itself with the current NFPA 855 standard and the International Fire Code, Chapter 12. So all it does is just align everything together. Added new battery type definitions to match the International Fire Code and the NFPA 855. What they did was they separated and added another 10 more definitions of types of batteries. Those batteries have always been there, they're just more clarified and more defined now. Change, some more changes. They added new battery type definitions again. They clarified these classifications and uses for evolving technologies, included a unused unwanted battery collection and waste storage provisions in the Fire Code now. Outdoor storage for fire separations, detection, weather protections of the actual batteries themselves, where they can be stored, how they can be stored, and what provisions need to happen for protection. Updated general rules for the lithium and non-lithium ion batteries types. Re-formatted the fire protection sprinkler system to align itself with the 2024 International Fire Code. All it was, was just a cleanup of verbiage and just aligned itself up. Updated language for the special amusement areas. Updated outdated standpipe and alarm systems for systems that have been in place for so many years, there are certain things that they have to do and upgrade and revamp as time goes on. Means of egress, it's emergency illumination powered by backup batteries. This has more to do with Group I-2 for standby power for the exit paths. It was really specific to that this year for this go-around. Two-way communication required in a horizontal exit compartments, basically emergency, two-way communication, so there's some type of PA system back and forth. Some of the changes, again, tents, temporary special event structures, membranes. It clarifies the testing, the registration for flame-resistant fabrics and materials, aligning the combustible materials with Title 19 standards, brings everything again back together. Ensures consistency for all types of events. Updated the reference standards to the newest publications and available for adoption. Our staff recommendation, again as Chief said, public notices were sent out to the Merced Sun Star, posted October 26, 2025, requesting council to open the public hearing, accepting comments, and then waive the first reading. Any questions?
That's your new truck.
That is it right there. Thank you again for that.
Any question, I think it's pretty standard, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance number 1211, adopting reference to the 2025 edition of the California Fire Code and amendment to Title IV, Chapter 3 of the Los Banas Municipal Code, and adoption of local amendments thereto. Anybody would like to speak on this exciting public hearing? Please come forward. Okay, like I said, this is pretty standard, routine items that happen all the time for cities to align with the state's requirements, so with that, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council to, let's see, we'll have the waive the first reading and introduction.
I'd like to make a motion to waive this reading of ordinance 1211.
No, we'll wait, we have to waive it first.
So waive the first reading?
Yep. Okay, we have a motion and second to waive the first reading, ordinance 1211, as stated. Any further comments or questions? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Now motion to introduce ordinance 1211.
All right, making a motion to introduce, the ordinance 1211 is read by title.
Okay, motion second, as stated, any further questions or comments? This is an ordinance, so we need a roll call vote, please, Lucy.
Perez, Sanders.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Amabile?
Yes. Okay, thank you, next item is also a public hearing to receive comment and consideration of the 2025 building codes. This is for the Local City of Los Banas amendments to the codes and justification of local conditions. This will be ordinance number 1212, adopting reference the 2025 edition, the California Building Standard Codes by amendment to Title 8, Chapter 1 of the Los Banas Municipal Code. Again, this is the lining up with the state, and Chief, I go back to you with this, or same thing? Okay, that's.
The only changes to the building code were the, the Part 7, which is the wildland urban interface, and the energy green codes, and the, the, the electric-ready buildings to facilitate future adoption of cleaner electric technologies for cooking and water heating.
Anyone else?
That's it, okay, with that, any, with that, let's see, I gotta open the public hearing.
Oh, I'd like to open the public hearing over that for item, ordinance number 1212. Anyone who'd like to speak on this, ordinance, please come forward. Okay, we did not see anyone, we'll close the public hearing, move back to the city council for the review of the first reading.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance 1212, is read by title.
First and second to waive the first reading of ordinance 1212, any further comments or discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it, now motion to introduce ordinance 1212.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to introduce, ordinance 1212 is read by title.
Motion and second to introduce ordinance number 1212. Any further comments or questions? We have a roll call, please.
Perez, Sanders.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Amabile.
Yes. Next item is also a public hearing. Three, public comment and consideration of approving the six-cycle multi-jurisdictional housing element 2024 to 2032, and approving a new ordinance to implement the housing elements, establishing a regional housing needs assessment, RHNA, and an overlay district. With this, let's see, before us, we have a resolution and an ordinance, resolution number 7015 and ordinance 1213. And with this, we'll go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. With this item, I do want to preface it with really describing to the council the council's discretion in approving a housing element. It is narrow because the state of California has dictated by state law that each city has to have a housing element and has to have certain sections, certain elements within the housing element, which I'm going to go through in this presentation. And HCD requires mandatory review and certification to ensure compliance with all of the criteria that is needed in the housing element. So that discretion is very narrow. The city is required to have a compliant housing element, and then it has to be certified by HCD. Non-compliance would mean the city would be in jeopardy of losing state funding, especially in this instance, in the, in the atmosphere that we're in right now, and the current environment would be our encampment resolution fund. We could be in jeopardy if we do not have a compliant housing element, which is tied to our, that funding specifically IRF is tied to our housing element, which is programmed for permanent supportive housing for our unhoused community. So with that, what is a housing element? It's one of the eight mandatory elements in the city's general plan. The city recently adopted a general plan, a new general plan update in October of 2022. And the housing element is governed by the California Government Code. It's required to be updated every eight years in accordance with the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation Cycle. And the RENA is the fair share of housing each jurisdiction should meet in their region to accommodate adequate housing as determined by HCD. And our region is Merced County. So our RENA, that RENA number, that Regional Housing Needs Allocation, is provided by HCD to Merced County, to our Association of Governments. And then a methodology is applied across all of the jurisdictions within the region to determine what our fair share is. And as you can see, based on this chart, Los Banas is highlighted in blue, but the majority of the units for the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, the majority of that is going to the city of Merced. And then next is the unincorporated county of Merced, and then next is the city of Los Banas. So it's not just a matter of there's seven jurisdictions and we're gonna divide it up, you know, seven ways equally. There's a methodology that's taken into place. There's site inventory, there's constraints that are all taken into consideration, which some of the constraints that Los Banas, then we would have had a larger allocation, but some of the constraints that we are faced with here in Los Banas is that on the west side, we are surrounded by prime ag land. And so some units then got distributed to other areas in the county. And with that, those constraints, additional units were not added to Los Banas. So the multi-jurisdictional housing element was a regional approach that all of the jurisdictions in Merced County took in this update of the housing element in this cycle. The approach was to do multi-jurisdictional because the majority, about 90% of the housing element itself is required statewide. So regardless of the jurisdiction, it's housing, it's state law, and all jurisdictions are required to abide by it, all in California. So we came together as a region and said, okay, well, we can work cooperatively together to be able to put together the housing element. And then each city would have their own focus and appendix within the multi-jurisdictional housing element that focused specifically on your jurisdiction and the policies and programs that apply to your city. So the participating cities were Atwater, Dos Palos, Gustine, Livingston, Los Banas, and Merced, and the county of Merced, and their regional analysis shared among all cities. And then, like I said, the local analysis is provided in the appendices. And the city of Los Banas, we are within Appendix F. And that's what we're gonna focus on tonight, is the Los Banas-specific area of the housing element, which we have jurisdiction over. So the housing element components, well, first off, there needs to be public participation, which we started, I went, there's a timeline slide within this, but we started back in 2022. We started with workshops, we had surveys conducted, and we held stakeholder interviews. The state requires that we provide an analysis on housing needs, which have its own requirements. We needed to analyze housing constraints, we needed to determine resources and inventory, we need to analyze fair housing assessment, and then we need to create a housing plan. So those are all the components that the state mandates we have within our housing element. So that timeline, like I said, we kicked off in winter of 2022. We were developing the draft in 2023 and holding community workshops and surveys. We had about 150 responses with the survey that was conducted. Then in summer of 2024, we held our first public review, which was submitted to HCD. So that was the multi-jurisdictional housing element itself and all of the appendices were submitted to HCD July 1st. There was a 90-day review period that HCD had, and then they responded back to each of the jurisdictions with revisions. So then Los Banas, we focused on, from the fall of 2024 to basically now revising our housing element and resubmitting back to HCD. We had three rounds of reviews, and, which takes us to where we are today, to October and November of 2025, where we presented the draft housing element to the Planning Commission. They made a recommendation up to the city council to approve. And then hopefully after tonight, we'd get direction to submit for certification to the Department of Housing Community Development of the state of California. So public participation, there was different methods used for public engagement. First, there was a website that was created at mercedmjhe.com. So that stood for Merced Multi-Jurisdictional Housing Element dot com. To the right of that slide is what you would see at the landing page when you get to that website. It gives you a little bit of information of the multi-jurisdictional housing element. What are the quick facts about Merced County? And then each community is highlighted, and if you're interested in a specific community, you can look at the different workshop presentations, you can look at the site inventory, and you can also read the appendices on this website. Then we held community workshops, which were, helped us create the housing element and helped to introduce new housing element goals and requirements to the community. We held stakeholder interviews, and this was targeted to stakeholders to help collect feedback on housing needs and fair housing issues in the Merced County region. Some of those stakeholders that we interviewed were Habitat for Humanity. We interviewed United Way. We also interviewed Anabasis, which is the developer that's helping us develop our permanent supportive housing, and just to understand the needs that Merced County is facing. And then we, like I said, we held an online survey and we received over 150 responses. So the housing needs, we had to analyze what Los Banas, what are our housing needs? And we looked at our population or employment trends. Our population growth, just in a snapshot, between 2010 and 2021 grew 23.5%. Our top employers were identified as Liberty Packing and Memorial Hospital. And our unemployment as of September of 2024 is 9.2%. We had to analyze affordability in housing needs. 36% of our households spend more than 30% on housing. So that was the big highlight and the big takeaway on Los Banas as we looked at affordability. And the renter occupied, 21.1% are overpaying. Of that 36%, they're paying more than 30%. 21.10% are renters, and 15% are owner occupied. We had to look at housing constraints and analyze those layers of constraints. We identified three different layers, governmental, which are constraints as in zoning, permitting process, building codes, required improvements, and the California Environmental Quality Act. We determined that the market is also a constraint with impact fees, construction costs, including cost of labor, land, materials, complexities of financing. So just making the project pencil out is a constraint. And then environmental, droughts, fault zones, resource conservation. All of those components add to the layers of constraints for housing development. So we looked at our resources and our inventory. We had to conduct a site inventory and our regional housing needs allocation. So if you can recall, one of those first slides had that table with the RENA for the entire county. And the city of Los Banas, we are identified with 3,132 units within our RENA. And I apologize, I didn't take enough time to really highlight that. But that is our regional housing needs allocation. That's what the state of California has. That's what the state of California has said, city of Las Vegas, you must provide opportunity to provide that housing within your community. And you need to identify opportunity sites within your inventory of where those units can be built. So we need to identify that. Well, the state of California does allow the city with planned and approved units to get credit. So though our total is 3,132, we have 400 units that we get credit for. And then anticipated ADUs, which conservatively were planning for 40. So technically, in total, with the site inventory, we're only required, well, not that we're only required, but what we are identifying is site inventory for 2,434 units. That's because we got that credit. So within our site inventory, we had to identify the opportunity sites and determine if we needed to rezone and then what that capacity would be. So we identified that we would have a total of over 2,800 units and that within our current site inventory and that we also have surplus of over 371 units, which gives us the required buffer that the state of California requires.
Excuse me, real fast, Stacy, is that over an eight-year period?
It is, it's during the planning period. And I do want to emphasize that the city, we're not developers. And the state of California is not saying, city of Las Vegas, you must develop this. What the state of California is saying is, cities, you must accommodate for housing within your community. You must ensure that these sites are appropriately zoned and that you're removing constraints to allow for that development to occur. And that's because the state of California is in a housing crisis. So, great question, Mayor, but that is over the eight-year horizon. There are check-in points, we have to report annually to the state of California on whether we're meeting our goals and whether we've made any progress towards our RENA. If you can recall, we do that about March every year, there's an annual report, and then that goes to HCD to ensure that we're in compliance. So that's a check that the state of California requires. And with this cycle of the housing element, we're anticipating that probably maybe halfway through, and I have Ringcon consultants here, and it'll be through this planning period, the state of California, if we are not meeting our goals and we are not making any progress towards our regional housing needs allocation, then the city is going to need to take more progressive action in providing incentives for development and really encouraging that those opportunity sites get developed. So that's site selection criteria. So we needed to look at how the city could accommodate that RENA, those regional housing needs allocation through our site inventory. But not every infill site qualifies. The criteria is that it needed to be between a half an acre to 10 acres in size and it needed to be vacant or underutilized. So we were able to use sites that maybe were between a half an acre to 10 acres that maybe had like an old homestead on it, an old, you know, it could be an old ranchette that now has the ability, it's R2, so it has the ability to have townhomes and duplexes. So we were able to get credit and identify that within our site inventory. So there was eight projects that were identified as approved and pending projects. And these are the projects that we got credit for within our RENA. So that reduced our number down to 2,400 units. And then the inventory sites, these are really all sites that we had planned for within our adopted general plan update that, like I said, was just adopted in October of 2022. We were fortunate as a jurisdiction that we have a new general plan update. Most jurisdictions are having to rezone. You know, in this case, we have over 50 sites, close to almost 50 sites. It's 48 within the inventory. But you can imagine some jurisdictions are having to rezone almost the majority of all of their site inventory. But we were lucky, we were already planning for that in the general plan update, anticipation of this sixth cycle of the housing element.
Mayor, before we move forward, I'd like to ask Stacy a question. So on this RENA, going back to page 17, I guess it'd be Site 3. I noticed on Seventh Street, almost across the street from the police, from the fire department, Station 1, there are two complexes back to back that are being built. And then also on Seventh, and I believe it's Wilmont, that's an old project that was developed by a former developer here in Las Vegas. And there's some projects going up on land there. Is that part of this RENA fulfillment or is that a private project?
So the Alta Vista will be counted. It's actually going to be in a couple of slides because that was identified in the fourth and the fifth cycle of the RENA. So that's actually helping us. That's the Alta Vista, which is just shy of an acre, it's .78 of an acre. But the two duplexes are less than half an acre, so they don't qualify for the site inventory.
All right, thank you.
So a new component that's been added to the sixth cycle is that we have to analyze affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is per AB 686, which has a very complex components within it. But essentially, the state of California has said, all jurisdictions need to identify disparities in access and opportunity. That focus for Las Vegas has been central and east Las Vegas, specifically central Las Vegas where Low and Maude Census Tract is. We need to promote equity through zoning and programs. And our duty is to affirmatively further fair housing and extends to site inventory and our housing plan. So we need to remove those constraints, that segregation within the community. And we need to ensure that various income level of housing is throughout our entire community, not just concentrated in one area. It's essentially what affirmatively furthering fair housing does. So we had to identify our opportunity areas. The area outlined in blue is the city's high resource area. And the focus is ensuring that we are providing opportunity sites within that blue area, which you can see we are. The moderate resource area is east Las Vegas, which is just east of Mercy Springs. And then north Las Vegas and central Las Vegas are actually lower resource areas. But these opportunity areas, and there's a lot, and I apologize because this packet is extremely thick. So I know you had a lot of material to read through. But that material is going through very carefully the analysis that goes into developing the housing element. And we had to identify opportunity areas and ensure that we, like I said, we're not concentrating all of our housing into, say, a low resource area. We needed to ensure that our housing is spread throughout the entire community, but especially in high resource areas. And what identifies as a high resource area could be employment, education, environmental. Lots of components go into what makes an area, which you can see here are former census tracts. And the south Las Vegas is identified as where the highest resources are.
So what do those little boxes represent? Are those single-family homes? Is it multiple family?
It corresponds directly to this, the site inventory. Those boxes here are outlines of those projects. Does that make, is that what you're asking?
Could you bring it back to the other screen, please?
Yep, it's our different, yes, it's our different residential zoning.
Thank you.
Okay. So then we needed to identify, after looking at affirmatively furthering fair housing, we needed to identify our housing plan. And that housing plan, we're required to have seven goals. So regional collaboration, housing development, affordable housing options, housing and neighborhood preservation, housing for persons with special needs, resource conservation and sustainable development, and then last, affirmatively furthering fair housing. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but we've met all of those seven goals through the various programs within the housing element. So regional collaboration specifically was with Program 1. Housing development and affordable housing options, those are within Program 2 and 3. Also with removing constraints, we identified that within Program 6 and 7. And then developing affordable housing options, Program 5, 8, and 11. Looking at goal for housing and neighborhood preservation and housing for persons with special needs, those are within Program 4, 9, and 10. And then Program 6, which requires zoning code amendments. And then Program 11, which is for lower income and special needs housing. And then resource conservation and sustainable development. We have a program for incentives for energy conservation and efficiency and residential development, and we're encouraging energy conservation. And then with the last goal for affirmatively furthering fair housing action programs, we have fair housing enforcement and outreach, which requires us to put information on the city's website. It requires us to hold an annual meeting with affordable housing developers. We need to have housing mobility, new housing opportunities in higher opportunity areas, and place-based strategies for neighborhood revitalization. We had to also have an analysis of SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, which we were staff-determined this to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061 B3 and 15283, and that the housing element update will not result in direct or reasonable foreseeable physical environmental effects. Future residential development facilitated by these actions will be subject to subsequent project-level SEQA review. And the city of Las Vegas, we're able to meet this exemption because of our recently adopted general plan update. It's less than five years, we have a certified EIR, and we're able to tear off of that environmental document. And we have no zoning updates, excuse me, rezones. Now I'm going to move into the zoning ordinance amendment. And the purpose of this is, it is required by state law and it's to implement the housing element. We're requesting to add Article 49 to Chapter 3, Title IX of the Planning and Zoning Code to establish a regional housing needs assessment, RENA, overlay district, which implements Program 3 of the housing element. So the state of California has said, not only do you need to adopt your housing element, but you need to, as of January 1st, 2024, was it January 24th, first, I don't remember, it was January of 2024, you need to have a RENA overlay district to implement your housing element. And this state law background, it's required per government code. And certain housing element sites are eligible for by right approval, meaning that they're exempt from SEQA. They need to be approved ministerially and they're subject only to objective design standards. So by right housing eligibility are projects that qualify for by right approval when they include at least 20% of the units for affordable to lower-income households and do not include a subdivision. The eligible reuse sites applies to vacant sites for lower-income housing in the fourth and fifth cycle, which there's 13 sites that have been identified, and they're non-vacant sites for lower-income housing in the fifth cycle housing element. But what by right approval means is that the city cannot require any type of discretionary approval. That would mean the discretionary approval would go to the Planning Commission. So we cannot require a conditional use permit. We cannot require planned development permits or any other discretionary approval under SEQA. And that for design review, it is still allowed, but it has to be objective. So those standards could be setbacks, but they cannot be subjective as in paint colors or elements that are subjective. They need to be objective. And so we really need to take that into consideration and it must remain ministerial. So the RENA overlay site summary, like I said, there's 13 sites. Those are identified in the fourth and the fifth cycle, housing elements that have not been developed on yet. And so those sites are eligible for by right, but they have to meet the criteria in that at least 20% are for affordable housing and it's not a subdivision. So to qualify for by right, you need to meet that criteria. Combined, potentially, this would give us over 1,400 units. And it is included in the housing element, Table F6-13. These sites are also already located within the sites inventory. And the majority of these 13 sites are in some sort of pending planned development. Three of these parcels are North Point Subdivision, which has been in the planning process for several years. And others are Joe Rocha Projects, Sunset Hills Development, the Seventh Street Project specifically, which is Alta Vista, the project that Councilmember Lewis brought up. So we're already making quite a bit of headway, which is going to count towards our RENA. But those sites are technically eligible for by right approval. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the 2024-2032 housing element and waive the first reading and introduce by title, Ordinance Number 1213, adding regional housing needs assessment overlay district to the zoning code and find the actions exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15061 B3 and 15283. And that concludes my presentation. I know I went through that really quickly. But let me know if you haven't, please ask questions. And I also have representatives from Ringcon. I have Kay and Brenna here from Ringcon Consultants that helped us develop the multi-jurisdictional housing element.
Before we open it up to questions, I'd like to open up the public hearing and see if the audience have anything they would like to speak about. For this would be, let's see, a public hearing to receive public comment on what's been discussed, our sixth cycle of multi-jurisdictional housing element from 2024 to 2032. I'd like to open up that public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak on that, please come forward. After the public hearing, we'll open up to the council. If you're not seeing or hearing anyone coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Moving back to the City Council, questions of staff?
Hold on, at the beginning you said we have very little discretion.
The discretion really would be in our programs. And it's the state of California defines what those programs should be and clarifies, you know, the city must have language to clarify and define how to implement these programs. But if the city wanted to provide additional incentives, wanted to provide additional flexibility for development, really to help development, you could do that within your programs. You also have discretion within your site inventory. So for Las Vegas, I go back to, we've already identified those sites within that general plan update that we did back in 2022. So those sites are already zoned for that development. But in other jurisdictions where lots of rezoning would have to take place, local jurisdiction can determine where that site inventory would take place. We have.
Congratulations on meeting all of those goals.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of work. Questions over here? Okay, then before us...
Mayor, if I may add one thing, just to elaborate on what you just said. The sixth cycle housing element is one of the most challenging housing elements that's ever come down from the state. And I had the pleasure of listening to it twice, one for the city of Gustine that we just talked, and I get to do it again tonight for the city of Las Vegas. So thank you for staff as well as RingCon consultant for really helping us get compliant. As Stacy mentioned, this is a very important program that are required as part of a housing element. And now there is a string attached is that if the housing elements are not in compliance, it ties to your IRF funding as well as your SB one. So thank you for making this happen. And also, as the Councilman Sanders point, and to retain some of that local policy to have them in place so that it still be inconsistent with what have been adopted in the 2020 general plan. So thank you.
Okay, so if we could have a motion for resolution number 7015 for approval.
We did, we helped.
Oh, we did. What? It's 7015, we'd be approving general plan amendment number 202503 to adopt the city Los Banas housing element of the general plan. The period is 2024-2032. That's just a motion and a second needed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as read by title.
Okay, we have a motion and second for resolution number 7015. As stated, for the questions or comments, not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Now we have an ordinance in front of us, 201213, adding Article 49 to Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Banas Municipal Code, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RHNA overlay district to facilitate implementation of the housing element. This would be a waiving of the first reading. Motion.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1213 as read by title.
Second.
Okay, a motion as stated for ordinance 1213. Any further comments or questions, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Now a motion to introduce ordinance 1213.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance 1213 as read by title.
Motion and second as stated. Any further questions or comments? It's an ordinance, so we need a roll call vote, please.
Perez, Sanders.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Amabile.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. Do you go home at night and talk to your husband about this stuff? Just thought I'd ask. Okay, so consideration, let's see, we did, okay. Next item's consideration approval for our city council resolution number 7016, amending the city's policy and procedures manual. This is personnel rules and establishing the summary of compensation for unrepresented employees. So with this, we'll go to our human resource director, Lucy Melanie. Lucy?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we are asking the council to approve a resolution to update the city's personnel rules and to also create a separate summary of compensation for employees who are not in a bargaining unit. The personnel rules were first adopted in 2012, and since then, only small changes have been made over the years. So this will be the first full review since 2012. The goal of this update is to make sure the rules follow current laws, match how we actually work today, and are easier for employees and supervisors to understand. This review was completed by Acting City Manager Gary Breezy, myself, and outside legal counsel Kelly Chufo with Lieber, Cassidy, and Whitmore. Department heads were given the opportunity to review the rules and provide input. In addition, all six employee bargaining groups were offered the chance to meet and confer, and agreements were reached with those that requested meetings. One major change is that benefits for unrepresented employees are now in a separate document called the Summary of Compensation for Unrepresented Employees. This puts their benefits in the same format as the MOUs for the six other employee bargaining groups and makes the information easier to find and update. The updates include changes required by state law, such as updates to sick leave, family and medical leave, bereavement leave, and leave for victims of certain crimes, updated descriptions of special pay items to match CalPERS reporting rules, newer updated policies on outside employment, drug and alcohol testing, mobile device and social media use, workplace civility, and required workplace safety programs. A few of the changes do have financial impacts. One is lateral police officer hiring incentive. The hiring incentive for experienced police officers coming from other agencies is being increased from $3,000 to $15,000. This is intended to improve recruitment in a very competitive hiring environment. Another issue is, or a change is, temporary upgrade pay. Employees who are assigned to temporarily perform duties of a higher level position will now begin receiving the appropriate higher pay starting the pay period after the assignment begins if the assignment is expected to last 30 days or more. This change reflects how these assignments generally work in practice. The third item is sick leave reinstatement. If an employee leaves the city and returns within two years, their previously unused sick leave will be reinstated. This change reflects, supports rehiring experienced employees and matches requirements for reinstatement within one year. And the fourth item is competence or time off for unrepresented employees. Overtime-eligible unrepresented employees will now be allowed to earn, carry, and cash out up to 80 hours of CTO per year. This change brings them in line with the Public Works Bargaining Group and provides consistency across the organization. There are sufficient funds in the current budget to support these financial impacts. If approved, the updated personnel rules with the new summary will be posted on the HR webpage for employees and the public to view. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Mayor, thank you. Yes, I have a question, well, some clarifications on a few things under Division Two of City Organization on page 551, Section 004, I'm sorry, 2004, Planning Commission. And it states that the Planning Commission is seven members. I think it's five now.
Yeah.
And that the members are appointed to two years. It's two years for the at-large position now, which is the mayor's position. But it's four years for the city council member appointment. And that the city council, the district city council members are the appointing person for their own jurisdiction. So is that to be reflected in this, since that was a ordinance change?
It will be.
Okay, okay.
So I'll make that change if you include that in your motion.
And also, under Section 002005, Parks and Rec, it indicates that the Public Works Director slash Engineer is over it. And I think it's under Parks and Rec now.
Right, correct.
All right.
We can make that change too, if you make that motion.
And then under Section 002007, the Tree Committee, it also states Public Works, and I think that falls under Parks and Rec. The other one I think is just more of a clarification for me. On page 582.
582?
582, and that would be, it starts with Section 6005A, Department Head, no. Well, I guess it falls in that classification. But on 582, it talks about classes and courses attended to be requiring to get an AA, the various different degrees. It states in the field of study to the employee's job classification. So is that saying that if an employee, if the city is going to pay for further education, that it has to be related to their current employment?
Yeah, or it'll enhance them.
Enhance them, okay.
Like they can't go to school to become a teacher because becoming a teacher isn't going to help them.
So does the degree have to be related to their job classification?
It just has to enhance their ability to do their job.
Okay, so you can get a degree in social services, but be the chief of police?
Possibly, yes.
All right, that's all I need a clarification of. I thought, you know, that it had to be specifically related to the technical abilities of you doing your job because there was that word in there, employee technical job knowledge. So, you know, getting a degree in something that's not related to the job that you're holding seemed like it was a discrepancy to me.
Councilmember, if I may clarify on that. Typically, for an employee tuition reimbursement, it's on per employee basis. Usually, when they submit in a tuition reimbursement agreement, they would put on there what are they pursuing. And typically, what we can do then is ask them, okay, how is this then going to enhance your current job? And provide those justification. That's typically how we proceed on each one of the tuition reimbursement program.
Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you. That's it.
So what's to be, to get a, have a BS or a BA for their education is to be a department head still? That's still in there?
For all department heads, yes. Some mid-managers, no.
Okay, is that a standard that's still taking place throughout cities, do you know?
I see it with department heads, but I think in public safety, there may be some cases where it's not.
Because I just know in the private field, that's being taken away, and a lot of companies are taking that away now. So I, just something to consider.
Mayor, I've seen that some. So I know that there's, at least for police officer, there is a law or a proposed law that may eventually come down the pipe to where police officer may be required to have a BS or BA. That is coming down, but yet it has not been passed yet. However, in some other mid-management level, like Lucy mentioned, just to help us with recruitment purposes of some of those positions, rather than having as a minimum requirement that is now listed as desired qualifications to where you don't have to fail them right up front when they apply, but you can determine those during the interview process to see if that going to elevate their skill to be able to do the technical job if it is technical, required that degree.
Chief, do you have some? Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I've also seen where maybe it is required to be a department head, but you can further education and work towards it within a time period, two years to get it, or something like that.
Or experience can substitute for education.
Very true.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Well, this took a lot of work too.
Yes.
This, the housing element took a lot of work, so bravo to our staff. So with that, I need a motion, consider a motion for resolution 7016. I'm not sure how to include.
Mayor, pro temp. I'll just read the numbers. I think I've already stated the corrections, and so, yeah, okay. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 7016 with the corrections to Section 2005, Los Banas Parks and Recreation, to make the Park and Rec to be over the department, over the commission. And also for.
It was 2004, 2005, and 2006.
Okay. How did I lose those pages?
On page 551 and two.
Oh, okay. And, yes, I skipped over one. Section 2004, the Planning Commission, to change the commission from a seven-member to five-member, and that the mayor's appointment is at-large, which is a two-year appointment, and that each council member's district has a four-year appointment. And that's appointed by the council member. And then the other one was Section 2007, the Tree Commission, to change it from Public Works Department Director to Park and Rec Department Director. I think those were it. I think those were the corrections.
Okay, I'll let you take a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for resolution 7016, as stated. Any further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Staff. Okay, item 10, we've already done. We already took care of. So we will move on to item 11, City Department Reports. We'll go back to Stacy, Community Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do want to note, we do have a public hearing for Wednesday, November 12th, for North Point. It's a subdivision that the city's been working on with Stonefield Development for several years. But it's proposing about 543 single-family units, and it has a multifamily component within it. It also has a dedication of one acre for a fire station and five acres for parkland. And then it has a linear trail along the canal. That project will be coming to the Planning Commission next Wednesday at 6:00 PM. And then in addition to that, I would like to call up our housing program manager, Kristi McCammon, to give us a little update on our housing program and all of the great victories with the housing division.
Thank you for being so courteous with waiting. Appreciate that.
My pleasure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Managers, staff, and beloved community members. I'm Kristi McCammon, for the record. I'm our housing program manager proudly. And I wanted to give a couple of updates on the One Tree Permanent Supportive Housing Project. We are happy to report some progress and some victories. I'd like to talk, first of all, about the real estate transaction that ESCRO is closing, that gives property ownership to the developer. And that means that construction can really pick up. We've been working very diligently on the project. And it doesn't mean that no work has occurred thus far, but now we can start to get equipment out and start to do some groundwork. We are expecting for that transaction to close here in the next week. All the signatures have been acquired, so we're very excited. Once that closes, we've got a groundbreaking ceremony that we are planning now. We are trying to schedule that for the week of the 17th. If Sarah Blevins hasn't gotten with you so far, we're going to try to coordinate schedules and make sure that everybody can join us. We're also reaching out to Soria and Caballero as well as the principals from the Central California Alliance for Health. Of course, they are the grantors that gave us the beautiful $2.5 million to extend the project. So we want to make sure that all those very important people are there present at the groundbreaking. We are really deep in the permit process through the Public Works Division and also through planning. And that's going really well. I really am grateful for the multidisciplinary team that has been working so well together, so collaboratively, so that when those permit packages came, they were expected and had even been discussed in advance. That makes those processes a little bit easier. We're looking for the permitting processes to come to their next benchmark on November 10th, where our CSG provider will be providing feedback to the developer for the mechanical, plumbing, and electrical permits. Very excited about that. In the next month, our developer has said that he will probably be putting the deposit down on the actual housing units. So that is just such an exciting moment. We're still looking about 12 to 18 months for lease-ups and for move-ins. It's giving our outreach coordinators and all of our community providers that we work with so closely time to get people connected with income and benefits so that they can move into those rentals. We're having a lot of success. Um, we're having a lot of success. I want to share two victories that happened in the last three weeks. Two people who were living in the encampment are now in their own apartments. One, um, also received full-time employment, and she got that offer the same week that she got the approval for her apartment. So two people that were in the encampment are now in their own homes. Um, of course, just as a reminder, we visit newly housed people once per week for up to six months. We sit down and have a cup of coffee with them, we make sure they're still connected to their goals, and we still work on managing, um, paperwork for them, so they still have access to food, nutrition, and other basic, um, life needs. Um, I think that concludes my update. I'm so glad to be with you, and I'm available for questions outside the meeting.
One of the comments that was made during the public forum.
Yes.
Was, why does it take so long?
I thought, may I answer that question?
We know why, but we want you to answer it.
For, for the record, this subdivision is fifty-eight homes, um, in, uh, a site where there is bare land, and so I can tell you, I actually live in a single wide, um, manufactured home, very similar to the houses that we will make for our people, and it took me almost two years on a piece of bare land to place a unit very similar to what we're going to be placing. So we have to go through the due diligence, that's really important to all residents of the city, and to make it fair for all residents. Also, to make it fair for affordable housing developers, so the procurement processes, as we learned with the audit, they can take months just for the procurement process. Also, to create the agreements with the developer that are very careful, it took a lot of legal review and months of work to put that agreement together, to make sure that we were good stewards of the city's land, and that we're good stewards of the grant money that came to us so generously. And then in addition, building takes a while, even with modulators. We'll also have to take into account that we want to make sure people can be with their families during the holidays, it's very important, and that we'll run into some weather, and so just like any other development, we wish it could happen faster, but if it happened faster, it may not be fair, it may not be diligent, and it may not be safe. So that's why we want to make sure we're fair. I wish it was faster.
I got more of a comment, I just want to say, you know, good job. I know when I stopped in to visit with you, you had made comment about you found new landlords that are willing to work with you and take their certificates and, you know, with section eight and all that, so that's good progress.
Thank you. Landlord engagement, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying that, I know it's not easy trying to get someone to, you know, to, to rent, and, uh, so that's, that's good, it's good news.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate your time.
We appreciate you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
That it, Stacy, or you have more? Okay, with that, uh, let's see, we'll go to finance, Minnie.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, just wanted to give you an update, um, on a couple of audits. Um, our regular city audit is going very, very well. Uh, we had auditors for their final field work yesterday and today, and so we're very happy, we're going to be, um, completing the audit by December thirty-first. Last audit was completed in June, um, of this year, so we're, we're really on top of it and, 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 and doing good headway. Um, we haven't had any issues, so, um, it's going very well. Uh, we also are doing headway on the specialized audit. Um, we have a selection list, and we're working with the auditors to upload all the documentation required, and that's also due by the end of, um, December, so we will have that to you, um, completed with our auditors, Harsaw Company and CPAs. Um, we're also doing interviews, uh, we did interviews today for an accountant-two position. We're very excited to be able to get full staffed. Um, we have an accounting clerk, one, starting on Monday, and so what, once we have the accountant-two, then finance will be full-staffed and, and we'll be able to complete everything that, that we need to do, um, moving forward, and, um, I do want to praise staff up, they've worked really hard, um, with all the audits that we have going on, and now with the addition of the, of the P. bid, um, really good, good staff and making sure those, those things get moving along.
And, uh, thank you, and I, the special audit is audits that the council requested, correct?
Yes, that's the specialized audit for this capital projects.
Yes, capital projects for the past, okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, uh, I think there was one other one, we did a TOT tax audit, and I, I think we did it, uh, we had a company that did a TOT tax audit for it, but it was just a percentage of, of the businesses that they audited, but it's my understanding that we were going to move forward to do all of the motels and hotels.
So we, we have a contract, um, an annual co- contract, um, with a company, and, um, we're going to do the remaining of the, um, hotels and the TOT, and that will be coming after we finish our, our regular audit.
Great, so TOT is transit occupancy tax, taxes on hotel stays. Just going to clarify, clarify that, and let's see, we'll go to fire chief, you have anything to report?
Uh, nothing needed to report.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for your help tonight, and human resources, Lucy, anything to report? Okay. Parks and Rec, Joe's, uh, he, did he run out of town, or what?
He's out of training.
Oh, he's still working?
He's out of training.
I thought he was getting therapy, I don't know. Okay, well, Joe will be back here at the next meeting, he does a great job. Uh, police chief, I'm sure you have your things.
Hello again, Mayor, Council. Uh, a couple items, um, I know it's late, so I'll try to go fast. Um, there's been, uh, I think a little bit of a request for an update on the homeless encampment. Not really exciting, but I'll, I'll do my best to, uh, bring you up to speed. So as you all know, about the first week of June is when we set everything in motion, got some staff together, we had some, uh, planned, some equipment in place, uh, we removed the encampment after providing notice, uh, providing items to help, um, the, uh, the unhoused store their belongings, and, um, we put together a number of, um, all-weather tents, and, uh, as of today, we have about ninety tents out there, we have, um, about ninety-five or so, um, unhoused people who are living on G Street, um, so, uh, it takes a lot of work on the police code enforcement and, uh, public work side, uh, we're out there every single day, we're out there at night, the site is monitored, uh, from about six P. M. to six A. M. through a company that we have, a monitoring and, and cameras, we also have our own cameras monitoring the site. Um, there was a question about, um, calls for service and, uh, potentially fires, um, we did have one tent that did catch fire, um, and then there have been other calls of warming fires and other things and trash burning. Um, those types of calls have gone down significantly since we have, um, put together this model, uh, prior, uh, to the way it is now, it was completely out of control, it was very hard to manage. As of today, I, I would say that, um, it is much safer, it makes it much easier for, uh, Christie and her staff, uh, Stacy's staff, also all the outreach, uh, entities, um, some of the faith, faith-based groups that go out there and, and provide resources. Um, we still say, uh, we believe we have about ninety-five percent of our homeless in one location, um, we do still deal with some that move around town, and we address those issues as they come up. Um, but for the most part, um, all of, I would say about ninety-five percent of our homeless are in one location, we've had a number of both county agencies, agencies from other cities, other groups come to Los Banas, interested in what we're doing, and they tour it with us, and they're amazed at, they have no idea how we pulled something like this off, but it's only due to the staff and all the work. Um, we work very well together, the city of Los Banas, code enforcement, police, fire, public works, parks, um, all the staff, uh, they do a, a great job, and we have the support of our council and our, our city manager also. Um, so, not too much more on that, other than, um, or again, the promise was that we're going to try to hold this thing together, so gives you all time to come up with more solutions. Um, we're still working on a few other things with housing, because the weather is changing, and so we're working on those, and we'll bring those forward as well. Just a quick reminder also that, um, from November first, I believe, December tenth, uh, we are in our twelfth year, our annual food drive, so we raise, um, we, we put this together and we, um, we gather a lot of food for our food bank, so would like to say about five days in, we've gathered probably about six to seven thousand pounds. We took a huge donation today from, um, both of our high schools, so, uh, a big thanks, and we are in the process of making arrangements to offload, uh, those items, what we've collected so far, to, um, our food banks in Los Banos, so we've already made contact with them. Generally, in years before, we waited till the very end, we're doing it now as we get it, just to help with what's going on in Los Banos. Um, another reminder, the, uh, Police Officers Association is selling tickets, as many of you know, one of my police officers is dealing with a, um, a really hard emergency in his life involving his young child, so those are available at the police department, the event is, I believe, going to be on Monday the tenth, and it's a, it's a dinner. And the last thing I have is, um, I believe that this is your last meeting until the new city manager, city attorney starts, and so I know that you're going to be around for a little bit longer, um, but I just want to let you know that, uh, I appreciate everything you've done, uh, back in twenty-ten, when I got promoted, and I had no idea what I was doing, and I was working on, um, projects, and Chief Breezy, for those of you who know, he loves to give the work, and he, and, and he expects a lot, and, um, and that was good, and we worked on a lot of really cool things over the years, and you were a very good teacher, and you've been a good friend, and I appreciate you. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, and don't be a stranger. I'm sure after a few weeks, you'll get bored, and you'll be sitting back here during council meetings, so. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I have a couple of questions, Chief. Um, the fundraiser, uh, the food drive, do you have a drop-off box at the police department? Is it in the lobby, or?
Yes, it's in the lobby.
Okay.
And then, uh, Mechanics Bank is going to have a barrel, I think we're going to get one out there tomorrow.
Okay, and then the fundraiser for your officer, I know there was, you know, like some, for lack of words, like a credit thing on, on the brochure that you could, I, I don't do those things, so can, can you guys take a check?
So, uh, again, this is.
To the Police Officers Association?
This is the Police Officers Association, I'm just bringing it up because it's, I think it's, it's a, it's a worthy event, but yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get you take.
Okay, all right.
Chief, is that a takeout, too, because it's a whole.
Yes.
Is it a takeout?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much for all your work, we really appreciate what the encampment, all the staff does in the encampment. And I'll be coming, well, I got a few more ideas, so I'll be.
Okay.
Being a thorn in your side for a while.
We're ready.
Thank you very much. Public Works William, welcome to the table.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and City Council, I'm still, I'm still, uh, settling in a little bit, um, Joe left me a lot of work, I thought he got it all done, but he didn't. Um, but I just have a few quick updates, and, um, these will probably get lengthier as we go along. Um, just a reminder, fall leaf pickup is going to start, uh, start up pretty soon, it, it usually just depends on the weather when the leaves start falling, and all of those, all of those leaves that are picked up, um, are taken to the landfill and dump, but then hauled to a composting facility, a certified organic composting facility, that then comes back to the city, to the residents, in the bags of, of, um, organic compost that are given away, um, through Mid Valley Disposal, so that's a, it, it all gets recycled, you can put it back around your trees, and then it'll make more leaves and fall back down, and the cycle continues, right? Um, and then, uh, associated with that, that's usually the day before your garbage day is the regular route, now, Public Works goes where the leaves are really heavy more often than that, where there's larger, um, older trees, um, but, uh, generally, the day before your garbage day, then it's garbage day, and then sweepers is your day after your garbage day, the sweeper comes by, so just a reminder to pull your cans back in off of the street, um, after your garbage day, so the sweeper can get by and do, do a good job, do a better job. Uh, we had, uh, some interviews for ECS, Environmental Control Specialist, which is the wastewater treatment plant operator, we made a conditional offer, so we're looking to fill one of those positions. We have some part-time interviews for maintenance workers tomorrow, I believe, and then we're trying to schedule some, some utility maintenance worker positions next week, so we're making some progress on, on some of those positions. Uh, City Manager and I have had a couple of conversations about some other positions, so we're working towards those that need to be filled. We had three pre-construction meetings since I've been here, today's my eighth day, so those things are moving forward, we got lots of projects going on. Uh, quick update on the Ortigalita Road Pioneer, the, um, I think there was some discussion about the delays for the signal light poles, so it was going to be a four-way stop, it may still be a four-way stop, but the poles did come in, um, earlier than expected, so the poles are there, now we just have to make sure we have the heads, we have the electricity and all of that, so, but that's good news that those came in early, because those can take a long time. And then finally, I would like to say, um, Stacy mentioned in her, her, um, very short, brief presentation, without much information in it, that we got lucky because of the general plan, and it's not, I don't, it's not luck, it's, that's good planning, that's how that was all built into our general plan and why we're so far ahead of the curve, so, uh, good job, Stacy. And that's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Great first report, thank you. And now we'll turn to our city manager, report. Aaron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, the first item on the report there is for the, um, regarding the executive compensations, that's on item, uh, twelve A. Um, the first one is for the police chief, um, so prior to my time on January twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five, um, based upon an annual performance review by Acting City Manager Breezy, the police chief's salary will be increased to eighteen thousand, eleven dollar monthly, um, for a total of two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar, one-hundred-and-thirty-two, two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-two-dollar annually, effective November first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, the second executive would be for the park and rec director, so again, on October twenty-seven, um, City Manager Breezy completed the annual performance, um, evaluations, and, um, the park and rec director's salary will be increased to thirteen thousand, um, eighteen-dollar monthly, uh, or a hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen-dollar annually, effective November sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. In addition to that report, um, I do want to, to remind Council that, even though we just came back from the One Voice trips, uh, we are planning for next year One Voice trips, and the due date for the delegates for that is December, uh, first, um, so next council meeting on the, uh, November nineteen, I will bring back some option and alternative on policy platform, as well, I will be asking Council to nominate delegates to be going to the One Voice trip for next year. Um, as discussed at M.C.A.G., there will be an additional day, an additional meeting at Washington D.C. itself, um, so it's most likely going to be taking the entire week, um, in May, when that time come. Um, seeing Joe is not here today, I do want to, um, um, announce some of the public hearing or public meeting that he will be conducting next week, so on November thirteen, uh, at, starting at five-thirty at the community center, um, we'll be doing a public meetings to, um, get inputs on the pump track project, as well as the South Point Park project, and both of these project will have two public, uh, um, input meeting, uh, once on again at, at, um, November thirteen at five-thirty, um, and also on Saturday, November fifteen at twelve P. M., both will be at the community center location. Um, otherwise, it is my third day here, um, so, um, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to be back home in Los Banos, um, I am very excited to work with very, very capable and dedicated department head and city staff, so, um, it's like drinking from the, um, fire hydrants in the last, uh, two days, but, um, it is a lot of exciting stuff, and as William mentions, there's a lot of progress and project that are going to be put forth before you, so, um, we're looking forward to execute on, on those plans that you guys adopted, thank you.
Great, thank you, good first report. We'll go to our council members, uh, Misty is absent, so we'll go to Evan, District Two.
Uh, I will try to keep this very brief, um, generally, thank you very much to staff, to everybody, I, I'm not going to call anybody out by name because I'll forget people, but I'm just continually impressed by how well everybody here does their job, and just thank you so much, it's, it really, it's impressive, it, it's really fun to work with people who know what they're doing and, and take, take pride in their work. Other than that, uh, if anybody in this town still says there's nothing. Other than that, uh, if anybody in this town still says there's nothing to do, I'm not sure what, what they're, if they're even trying because there is so much going on. I think I've been to like five events in the last couple of weeks and I missed probably 15 of them. I think there was a trunk retreat every day for seven days leading up to Halloween. It was pretty crazy, keeping the dentist in business in town. And, yeah, that's pretty, I'd, I'd like to hear, um, who else still here? So I'd like to hear more people about the, the hens because I'm, I, I support that. I've been waiting for somebody to bring it up because I think it'd be cool to, to have a ordinance for that. I'd like to hear from, from more people, uh, if, if people want to come to, to council meetings and, and start a movement towards that, that'd be cool. Part of it for me is that there's so many roosters in my neighborhood, I'd like to get some, something around that, but I think doing them both at the same time makes a lot of sense. Um, there's one particular rooster that never stops and it's getting old. Uh, and then I was going to ask William if you know anything about Deanzaway and what the status is on that, but I won't hold you to actually knowing anything since it's your eighth day. I can wait till the next meeting.
I know, I know a little bit about it. I, there have been some meetings and some discussions about Deanzaway and, and with another project that's going on in, in the general area. Uh, I don't think we have a finalized plan yet and not a lot of movement, but, um, we're work, we're working towards it.
Continually working towards it, okay, thank you.
Um, council member, we'll get back on you, uh, to you on the next report, just because there is, um, ongoing coordination with council right now on apartment portion, so we want to make sure we get those information to you before we make the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Marcus, District 3.
Yeah, like Evan said, you know, Evan said, thank you to staff, you guys do amazing work, thank you very much to all of you. Um, I also want to welcome again, uh, William and, and Eron. Welcome, you guys just started and you guys are hit the ground running, which is fantastic. They brought up, you know, something about the MacArthur apartment, so I'm not sure what, you know, what we can do on that, so I'm kind of going to kick that over to you on the adventure now, but if we can see, you know, what are the concerns there, which they told us, but, you know, what, what can we do? Veterans Parade, that was great, that was a great turnout. Um, you know, so that's, that's a lot of participation by the bands and that was, uh, fantastic. You know, like Evan said, there's a lot of things to do in this town, can't get to everything, there's a lot. Yeah, and you're, I'm looking at your sheet right now, Parks and Rec, and you're reading off, like, man, is there more stuff to do? There's a lot, but, uh, no, that's good stuff there. And, uh, you know, once again, uh, I want to finish off by just thanking Gary Breezy for everything he did for the city and everything he's done for everybody that's here. Um, you know, he was great to work with and, uh, once again, you know, thank you to, uh, to Gary, alright? Thanks.
Marcus? Mayor Protem, Deborah Lus.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, I, I have a, um, uh, email that I received from, uh, San Joaquin Air Quality Control District, um, which they are recommending to the public to improve our winter quality air, uh, for our residents by avoiding wood burning this winter and using cleaner alternatives as much as possible, uh, due to the PM 2.5, which are the pollutants of fine particles that are produced by, uh, uh, fires burned in a fireplace. The period of time that, uh, they're recommending for no wood burning in, uh, fireplaces or stoves would be November 1st through the end of February is the protected period of time. There are grants available, um, some based on income qualification and some just for everyday regular people to help you transition from a wood burning fireplace to a gas insert or electric. So that there are funds available to help purchase those items, uh, if you need the help or would like to help. It's been a little while since I've been here and so, uh, I want to thank the city for, uh, making it possible for me to attend the League of Cities. There were some interesting classes that, um, I attended and one was about council meetings and so, uh, there was a lot of discussion in regards to that. Uh, this last meeting that I missed, uh, was as a result of attending the, um, annual retreat for, uh, Valley Air District. And there were, as usual, multiple subjects around, um, uh, finances which are going on regarding the state and the federal government. We had state firefighters there, we had federal force firefighters there, uh, educating us on what the latest things that they're doing to mitigate all the underbrush that's been laying there for years that probably are taller than I am and, uh, the dead vegetation. Uh, we did have a tour the first day of a biofuel plant, um, that's right up there by, um, uh, oh gosh, where did I write it down here? Bass Lake. Uh, and this fuel biofuel plant should be coming online sometime in December and they've already been shipping up, uh, uh, tree particles from the fires down south, anything that's going to be happening here in the Central Va- Valley area. And this biofuel plant will be incinerating all of those chips and turning it into energy and selling it back to PG&E. So there doesn't really seem to be much controversy from the public about this type of biofuel plant because it doesn't produce any, uh, bad ener- uh, bad, uh, fumes or, uh, PM 2.5 or all the other bad things that go out into the atmosphere. So it, it's, it's a positive, positive thing and so it's going to help get rid of all of those trees that were in the fire, um, down in Southern California as well as what's being dealt with in our State Forestry Department. So I, I would assume if this becomes successful, there'll be other biofuel plants that are, that will be erected here in California to take care of that, that problem. Welcome, uh, Mr. Vi and welcome to our new city manager. Look forward to working with both of you and, um, we had a long meeting tonight, but it was a good meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to sort of cut it short too, but I just want to announce that, uh, thanks to the Air Quality Board and board that Mayor Protem's on, we had, received a grant for our off, for our chambers here, our council chambers, and after the first of the year, you'll be able to, uh, not only watch us on TV, but send us information and actually interact with, with the city clerk during meetings. Uh, this is something that's being required by the state and so we'll be getting on board of that probably early next year sometime. So I'm looking forward to that, it'll be probably another screen I have to handle. And so Lucy's going to take care of it, I think, right? So, so I'll rely on her. So, um, let's see, with that, I've been invited to tour Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant, so I'm looking forward to that. I've always wanted to get inside that plant and take a look. So that's in December and I'll give a report after, if I'm not glowing, I'll get, with, with nuclear fallout radiation, I'll, I'll be coming back and making a report on that. So I do appreciate everybody that spoke this evening, it's a long meeting, but we had a lot of participation and we, we respect everybody and we want to hear everybody's concerns and we want to make sure you know where we're coming from and also the process. Some government can be very frustrating and as you see, city government works the fastest and its county works slower, then a state works slower and you can tell federal is almost standstill and it is standstilling now, standing still now. So anyway, with that, I appreciate everybody, our next meeting will be in two weeks and, uh, I know Bill, this, he's going to be gone a little bit, but I think we're going to see you back in December, right Bill? So he's going to make a little return visit, uh, planned time, so it's not quite saying goodbye to Bill, but with that, this meeting is adjourned. Mayor? Yes.
I just want to say, shop smart and support local.
There you go, Minnie, I forgot. Forgot for seconds. There it is.